All the meeting to order, we are returning from closed session and I would ask the city attorney to report on closed session.
Good evening Mayor and council members. The city council is in closed session this evening. Conference with real property negotiator regarding a long list of properties set forth in the agenda. The properties are all located in the Old Town area. And also, the council is in closed session, conference with league and council of dispute litigation. And there's no reportable action on either of those items.
Thank you. Roll call please. Okay, council members, Powers, here, Singleton.
Here.
Sheldon.
Here.
Cruz.
Here.
I did not see any Boy Scouts out in the foyer, so I guess we will go ahead with a silent prayer, followed by the flag salute. You're invited to join us.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which was established, one nation under God, indivisible, with every being and every soul.
Thank you. Liz, would you please read the video statement?
This meeting of the Galt City Council is being videotaped in its entirety and will be tablecast without interruption on Metro Cable 14, the government affairs channel on the Comcast and SherWest cable systems. Tonight's meeting can be seen on Channel 14 and will also be webcast at www.saxmetrocable.tv this Friday and Saturday mornings at 9:00 a.m. Tonight's meeting can also be seen via live video streaming on the city's website at A DVD copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address council should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing council and state your name for the record.
Thank you. I would ask for a pivotal of the agenda. Are there any additions or additions?
No.
Okay. Then we will happily move on to presentations. Would you introduce the first presentation, please?
Well, Maria Orr from the Galt High School principal, focus on academics, biomedical engineering, science and technology, and agriculture academy.
Good evening Mayor Payne and council members. It's a privilege to be here this evening to share a little bit with you about the wonderful things that we're doing at Galt High School to support our students academically. This evening I have also with me Mrs. Deborah Crane, who is the academy director for the Biomedical Engineering Academy, and Ford Sheldon, who's also one of our students at the Biomedical Engineering Academy. And Ford, this evening will speak a little bit more about his experience in the academy. This evening, I hope that you all have a hand up. I have a folder for you that highlights a little bit about our programs. I'll just give you a minute. What you're going to see in the handout is, we've highlighted our Ag Academy and also the Biomedical Engineering Academy. Now, what do these academies have in common? What they have is they're small learning communities. And what we have is, the students have an opportunity to take the elective classes and also take math, English, and social studies with their teachers. They're also participants in the academy. So, for example, if you look at the Ag Academy brochure, you will see there's a pathway for those students who are in the academy. These are all pure academies, so they're small in class sizes. And you will see that there's a pathway for the students from freshman year through 12th grade. Why does this academy model work? Because there's a lot of support for the students. And as you can see, in the past, our Ag Academy students have been very successful. We've had students who've gone on to becoming state president of the FSA program. Last year, you probably read in the paper that we had three students who won first place in the Nationals. So, we have tremendous success with our students and their ability to take the skills that they learn and translate them into public speaking. Also, in the brochure, you will see a little descriptor in terms of labor market, what's available for students once they graduate from the academy. And this is just an example, I just went online just to show you. And in the back, I have also a blueprint for all students in the Galt High School district. This is the pillars that we use. So, when you look at our academies and you say, "What are they addressing?", these are the pillars that we're looking at for our students. High expectations for all our students, standards aligned, rigorous instruction, a culture of continuous learning, and a safe climate and strong relationship. So, all our academy models embody this. With the Ag Academy, we've been doing this program, we've had this program for many, many years. We've been very successful. And what you're going to see in the fall is, we're actually going to expand to the marketing. And we will be selling eggs to the community and they're all, what do I want to use? They're organic, thank you, I can't think. They're organic eggs. And so, we're looking at opportunities to sell organic eggs to the community. So, another way to have the students involved in not only responsibility, caring for the animals, but also in making contacts with the community and selling. Okay? With our Best Academy, also you will see that we have a pathway for our students. And this is our first year for the Best Academy. And one of the things that we have in this program is that all four years, the students will take math and science. Again, another priority for students to make sure that they're UC, state eligible. And we have a group of panel members that are supporting us. And I've attached this, so you can see the members of the community who are supporting our program. One of the things that's very important about these academies is that we also have an internship built in. So, for the students, they have support in writing resumes and interviewing techniques. So, the expectation is for these students, once they go through the program, is that we will be looking at internships for them and placements. Any questions so far?
I don't think so.
We have about 200 students right now in our academy for the biomedical engineering program. And what I would like to do right now is, I would like to have Ford share a little bit about his experience in being the academy model. And like I shared a little bit earlier, he has a tough decision. He's been accepted into UOP and Brigham Young University. So, now he has to make a decision which engineering program he wants to participate in. He's going to talk a little bit about that and the ACE mentorship.
All right, it's good to be with you tonight. Like you said, my name is Ford Sheldon and I'm currently a senior at Galt High School. During the first three years of my high school experience, I had the opportunity of taking engineering classes. And these helped me shape my career aspirations, figure out what I liked and didn't like, where my strengths and weaknesses were. And that led me to, throughout the course, form my career path, which is in the line of physics or engineering. They both go hand in hand to a certain degree. And as Mrs. Orr was saying, I've been accepted into University of the Pacific and Brigham Young University Idaho. And at these two schools, whichever I choose, I will hopefully study in the field of green energy, where I'll be able to use the foundation that I built at Galt High School, the problem solving and the engineering fundamentals to help make a successful career. Also this year, the Galt High School sponsored an ACE Mentor Club, which ACE stands for Architecture, Construction, and Engineering. And this club is student run and each year, a design challenge is given to each team. And the students have to work together to come up with an answer to this design prompt. And it's generally something that benefits the community. This year, we're working to develop a monument that resembles Sacramento's history. In previous years, we've worked, or the team has worked with public transportation and other public works. But this is also a great opportunity for students. I've learned a lot this year. I've been the project manager, so I've gotten hands-on experience with leading others. And it's also something that I wish to pursue in my future as an engineer, is being a project manager, leading, working one-on-one with others to complete a task and produce an output that is of benefit to others.
Thank you.
I talked to you guys before and I appreciate being able to come back. I just wanted to remind you guys that summer of 2014 will be our first year that we have our students going out for internships. And businesses and people in the community, we're going to need placement for those students. And so, if you know of engineering, if you know of medical situations where we can get those students placed, please let us know. And if a concern for those businesses is workman's comp and having students underage working, we have an agreement with Kelly Services and they will cover those students under their workman's comp. So, those students will be covered under Kelly Services. So, it helps take you the liability of that kind of situation off of the businesses. So, please let me know if you have any situations, my name's in there and I'd be happy to talk to you. Thank you.
And I just wanted to say some more on the Galt Herald. You'll probably read a highlight on the Ag Academy for Galt High School. So, you'll be reading about that. And then the following week, we'll be doing a highlight also on the biomedical engineering program. Why do we want to share this with you? Because obviously, we're very proud of the quality product, the students that we have in our program. But also because we are now a magnet school for biomedical engineering program, which means is that we are open now to students within the Galt area as well as outside the Galt area. That's how strong this program is. There's only 35 schools in the nation that teach engineering and we're one of, I think, 11?
How many in the state of California? Engineering.
Well, there's lots of schools that teach it, but the Nationals, we're one of six.
One of six. So, I didn't want to give you the wrong, we're only one of six in the state of California. So, you can see that we are a leading force for our students to have an opportunity to take this to the next level. So, I did want to share with you that we are a magnet school. So, as you have an opportunity, we invite you to come to Galt High School. We have a state-of-the-art premier program where Mrs. Crane would be more than happy to walk you through, show you. I think it's comparable with most city colleges that you would walk into and you would be able to see the equipment that she has there for the students. We're very proud of the ability that students can take a problem and they can work together and they can solve it. And there's more than one way to solve it. So, I think that what this has taught us is that this is education in a different way. And it's something that's going to serve them well in their future. The one final thing I wanted to add is that on Monday, January 23rd, you are cordially invited to Galt High School to Warrior Gym. In addition to academics, we're very, very proud of our Warriors. And Monday afternoon at 2:30, we will be retiring two jerseys. We have two students who graduated from Galt High School. Ryan Matthews, he graduated in '02, he's now a pitcher for the Washington Nationals. And Zach Phillips, who graduated in '04, he's now a pitcher for the Baltimore Orioles. And you are cordially invited to come see their shirts retired.
Wow.
Thank you very much.
That's impressive.
Yes.
Thank you.
You know, I think there's nothing that reflects a community better than the students that they turn out of their schools. And I like to brag about Galt and I think this was something that we needed to brag about because you're doing such an exceptional job. Thank you so much. And I'm looking forward to seeing that robot thing running around out there. Very impressive.
Today, we had a presentation in one of our physics classrooms and we actually had patients who had to show how they trained to use a battery to make things, you know, work. It was very, very fun because they were able to explain to me how they were able to use the energy from the battery to use the light with the robot.
Thank you Principal Orr for coming. Also, I'd like to acknowledge that we have a high school board member in the audience, Kathleen Amos is here. So, thank you so much. And again, we are so proud of all the work that you're doing. Any comments or questions?
Appreciate them coming.
Great presentation, thank you.
Next, we have the Community Development Department on permit processing.
Thank you. Good evening Mayor and City Council. As part of the ongoing series of city departmental presentations, the Community Development Department was asked to present an overview of the typical process to obtain a planning entitlement. Chris Arias, the city's senior planner, who is now doing most of the permit processing, has prepared this presentation and I'll turn it over to Chris.
The presentation will come up shortly. It's not on the screen, bear with us one moment.
Not the first time.
Good evening Mayor and council members. As Sandy said, I'm Chris Arias, the senior planner with the city's Community Development Department. The item you have before you is a presentation on the development permit process. The goal tonight is to describe to you the planning department process to go from bare land to a completed project and give you a little bit of flavor of what we do. The current slide shows the Pizza Guy's Building, I think you're all familiar with, on Carroll Drive. It's somewhat of a recent project and I'll use it as an example in the presentation. There are many types of planning applications for development projects. You're probably familiar with general and specific plan amendments and rezones. The city council makes the final decisions on these applications. Any project wishing to change the general plan, specific plan or zoning, must complete this application. Residential subdivisions often go through this process. Residential subdivisions also complete a tentative map application. This is required when a parcel of land is being divided. The planning commission makes decisions on tentative maps. Another application is a lot line adjustment. This is completed when there is a merger of parcels or lot lines between parcels are adjusted and no new parcels are created. The city's development review committee makes decisions on lot line adjustments. It is comprised of the planning director, city engineer, and building official. A conditional use permit or CUP is required for uses that have been determined by their special nature to require additional review. The planning commission makes the determination on a CUP. The city council can hear a CUP on appeal. The Walmart project is an example of a CUP that was on appeal. A recent CUP was for an image tattoo company that is located on, now located on Industrial Drive. It was not appealed and therefore did not come to you for approval. The final application shown on the screen is the one we'll focus on tonight. It is a site plan review application. All commercial, industrial, and multifamily projects must complete this application before obtaining a building permit. It is a staff-level review application and therefore not one due by the city council or planning commission. The slide on the screen describes the process of a site plan review application. When an application is submitted, staff routes it to other city departments and outside agencies for review. The departments include public works, building, police, and parks and rec. Outside agencies include, but are not limited to, the air quality district, CCSD fire, and the utility companies. Staff typically allows the departments and outside agencies two to three weeks to respond to the project. During this time, staff is then reviewing the project and performing the planning review. We typically, well, by law, we have to respond to an applicant within 30 days. The first item on the screen is a planning advisory committee meeting, or PAC. This is a free service that the offers. It allows applicants to provide a conceptual plan to the city for review before a formal application is submitted. The city departments and outside agencies, usually CCSD fire, then meet with the applicant to provide feedback so that they can submit a more complete application. The next slide shows the items that are required on plans for site plan review submission. The diagram is a basic site plan. This is where hiccups sometimes occur. Staff will have to ask numerous times for basic information, even though it was required in the application. And these items are required because they're important for staff to evaluate the project for conformity to the city zoning code and general plan. One of the most basic items staff will review is the position of buildings on the site. Staff will review plans to make sure that the location of the building does not create conflicts with other structures on the site, or with traffic, or with nearby uses. The plan on the screen is the Pizza Guy's Building on Carroll Drive. The pole in the driveway is not associated with the project, it's just an example of things we try to avoid when looking at positioning a building. The Pizza Guy's Building position makes the most of the lot by its location in the corner and it doesn't conflict with nearby uses or with traffic. The initial application actually had the building right on the property line. Staff asked them to move it off a little bit for maintenance. The building is, or the property is surrounded by Caltrans property and they limit access. So, it was an example of staff having to look at the building location. Parking review can be one of the most time-consuming and problematic. The Galt Municipal Code is specific in its requirement for a number of parking spaces, dimensioning of parking stalls and drive aisles, number of handicap spaces, location of driveways, and other parking lot-related items. Each new building is required to provide a certain number of parking spaces based on the size and the use. For example, Pizza Guy's project was required to provide one space for every 250 square feet of floor area. The building is 5,587 square feet, so it was required to provide 22.34 spaces. Obviously, you can't give us a .34 space, but the code requires us to round out. And there are 24 spaces on the site. And the parking shown on the screen is not of the Pizza Guy's. Again, it's an example of why there are specific requirements to make sure those type of things don't happen.
Exactly.
Another review item for staff is how pedestrians, bicycles, and vehicles move to the site and through the site. This project was rather small, so bike access was rather limited. But you can see how pedestrian access is highlighted from Carroll Drive to the building. Staff also worked to limit the number of driveway cuts on Carroll Drive to limit the impact on traffic. There are numerous small parcels on this commercial section of Carroll Drive. So, staff requires that new projects share driveways with neighboring uses to limit the number of driveways. The main driveway for Pizza Guy's is shared with the adjacent car wash. Another challenging review item is building design. Staff provides architectural review to ensure that project design is compatible with surrounding neighborhood and meets general plan design guidelines. For example, buildings should be well-articulated, avoiding long void surfaces with visually pleasing design features, be of original design, and avoid monotonous appearances. And that unsightly items like HVAC equipment and storage areas are properly screened from public view. The varying roof height, the tower, and the vibrant color of the Pizza Guy's building elevation give it a distinctive appearance. It's a good example of incorporating the design requirements previously mentioned. The Pizza Guy's and the building on the screen both use a vibrant color pattern, but you can see how the Pizza Guy's building actually pulls it off, or the other maybe struggles using that color pattern. Another site plan review requirement is landscape plans. The plans must conform to the Galt Landscape Manual and municipal code requirements. Municipal code requirements include a minimum of 10% parking area to be landscaped, one shade tree per four parking spaces, minimum size for landscape strips and planting areas, and curb requirements. The slide shows the landscape plan for the Pizza Guy's project. Other items for review include lighting. Staff make sure that the lighting doesn't spill over to adjacent properties. And we try to avoid light pollution on the nighttime sky by requiring directional cutoff fixtures. All projects are also required to provide screen trash and recycling enclosures that are easily accessible for the trash hauler. Projects also are required to provide a minimum number of bike parking spaces. Excuse me. The Pizza Guy's project was required to provide one bike parking space for every 25 vehicles or a minimum of four. Since they only have 24 parking spaces, they're required to provide the minimum four bike parking. The code also requires specific dimensions for the bike parking pad and in a location that does not impede pedestrian or vehicle traffic. The next two slides show the approved Pizza Guy's site plan and building elevations. Once the site plan and building design meet all the city's code requirements and general plan guidelines, it will be given site plan approval. And then, once given approval, it's on to the building permit stage, which has its own process. The chart on the screen kind of shows you the typical process of a building permit. And once again, all commercial, industrial, and multifamily projects must have that site plan review approval before they get to this stage. And the final slide shows the completed project. So, it is possible to actually get something built. You know, I'd like to say, I don't think I addressed it enough, but planning staff does work closely with a lot of the other city departments and outside agencies. And it is a collaborative effort oftentimes to get to a completed project. And it's, the city departments are great to work with. And that completes our presentation and we're here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any questions at this point, this time?
Putting that together, all the paint schemes and the parking photos, yeah.
Yeah, it was kind of fun searching for some photos. I wish I had more time. I think there's a lot out there. We really could have done a lot with it.
That was good. Thank you, Chris.
No questions?
Thanks.
Thank you, Chris, so much. I think we are now ready for public comments.
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address council on any agenda item during consideration of the item. Speakers shall restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject jurisdiction of the city council and limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the city clerk. First, Alex Bauer.
Welcome, Alex. Good to see you.
Good evening Mayor and council members. Thank you for taking my comment this evening. I'll be quick, I promise. I'm here today to just simply let you know and invite you to a golf fundraiser that the site council, excuse me, the athletic booster clubs from both high schools are putting together along with the teacher federation. And we'd like to invite you to come out and have some fun. It's on April 29th and all the proceeds are going to go to the athletic programs or to the booster clubs equally among both the high schools. And I'd just like to quickly point out that, you know, high school athletics is a uniquely American experience. And, you know, of course, we're facing a lot of financial challenges and we're hoping that we can restore and reinvigorate the high school athletic experience for our students. And so, I would like to invite all of you, we're taking, you know, if you want to donate anything for the raffle, we're taking that. We have whole sponsorships. So, you know, it'll be a good time. And it includes dinner, it's a prime rib dinner. So, even if you're not a golfer, you can still come out to dinner, y'all. So, I do have a flyer, I don't know if it's appropriate for me to approach and to hand it out to you, okay? And so, that's just, again, April 29th, it's at Lockford Springs. And all the contact information's on the flyer. And I will be running some ads in the Galt Herald too, so you can see us there. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Kathleen Amos and Patricia St. Jean. Next, we have Kathleen Amos and Patricia St. James.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Kathleen Amos, and I live in the city.
And I'm Patricia St. James. I live in Elk Grove. Volunteer down here a lot. We're here to talk to you about the underage drinking guide that we developed. It's a coalition of the GALT Youth Alcohol Prevention, and it's made up of lots of different people from this community, and we've been working together off and on for four years. Kathleen's going to talk about our finished product, and the council members all have that finished product. We're very, very proud of it. And then, we'll be talking about our town hall meeting that's coming up into this month.
So, this is what the underage drinking guide looks like. It's an underage drinking guide for parents. It's a parent guide, and it basically goes through, it's designed to be, both to give parents information, for example, in the two thousand nine, two thousand ten Healthy Kids Survey for the city of GALT, twenty-six percent of seventh graders stated that they had already had a full alcoholic drink. And so, this guide suggests tools for parents to help their children to avoid, because some of the newer, it also explains some of the newest research, which is, which shows that, that the younger a person starts to drink alcohol, the more likely it is that they will develop an addiction issue as they get older, because it affects their, I'm not sure I can pronounce this correctly, hippocampus or hippocamis? Hippocampus, part of the brain, which is the part that is involved in learning and memory. And if they, the younger they start, the more likely it is that they'll never fully catch up to other people their age, because it inhibes, it inherits that part of their brain, that learning part of the brain. So, there are some tools in here that, it encourages parents to set clear and consistent got rules for their children, and to listen to their children, and to, it says it's not too early at age eight to start talking to children about the issue of alcohol, because they see what's alcoholic drinking, because they see what's going on around them, in the adults around them. And the number, one of the number-one factors in a young person's alcoholic, use of alcohol is what their parents think about it. So, we're going to be presenting this up to the parents of the community on, well, I like, Patricia's going to talk about that, but it's a, it's a, we worked really hard on it. We've worked on it for over five years as a coalition, and we're really proud of the final product, so, thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen.
And I'm going to restart the clock since there's two of you.
Oh, thank you.
To be fair, I could have been doing it separately.
I'll try to be fast, though. Okay, so, the reason for the town hall meeting, and hopefully all of you will see this all over the community soon, is to release this information. We also have it in Spanish, and printed up in Spanish. With the town hall meeting, the first part of it will be two locally-designed and completed DVDs by our students about underage drinking, and, well, not specifically, but about drinking in general. The DVD here from GALT High was done two years ago. All the students that worked on that DVD are all now in college, and we're very proud of them. So, two of those college students will be here to introduce that on the thirty-first, when we have our town hall meeting. The other DVD is done by a group of students at Valley High School, from Elk Grove School District. They had a doctor from Kaiser working with them, and it's quite chilling. You know, you know from the beginning what's going to happen in it, but still, it's very, very touching, very chilling, and I cry every time I see it, and I know what's going to happen in it. But it underscores for us what the, the most important message that we can get out. Parents are front-line. They're the best thing that we can do in terms of prevention of early use, and that stops the whole domino effect of drinking and getting the brain hardwired for addiction. So, this night will be about two DVDs. Becky Wood from Mads will be doing a presentation to adults, while the high school students from Valley High School will be working with our students here, eight and older, and eight because the average age of on start to use in Northern California is age eleven. We're talking about sixth grade. I'm glad you're shaking your heads, but we need to start really young. Valley High students will be working with our kids about what happens to the brain, and how it happens, and then also why people start using, because they need to be aware of when those times are. They have to be very, very careful and cautious, and then there's options for them. And then, we'll have some, oh, at the end, ice cream for kids, but also, we'll have other raffle prizes, and one very impressive one, so. And I'm waiting to put that on here. But, anyway, any questions?
Just so the public knows, because I know that you all have a copy of this, but so the public knows, and I know it's been in the paper, the forum will be on Tuesday, two weeks from tonight, January thirty-first, from six-thirty to eight at Horizon Community Church on Fairway Drive, and there will be food available there. Tacos for a dollar a piece will be, will be available before we start at six-thirty, so people will be able to, hopefully, parents and teachers will be able to come right after work and not have to worry about eating dinner. Okay? Thank you very much. Thank you to the city helping, being co-sponsors on this. We appreciate it.
Yes.
Thank you for all your hard work.
Yeah, we need to thank you guys for all your hard work.
I know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we are now ready, oh, do you have another? That's it? Okay, so we're ready to go through the consent calendar. I would ask if there's any questions or comments on the consent calendar. If not, I would entertain, well, I would ask the city clerk to read everything first.
We have four items tonight. Number one, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of December twentieth, two thousand and eleven. Number two, approval of the city of GALT warrants. Number three, security personnel requirements for city of GALT facilities. And number four, approval of the treasurer's report for the period ending November two thousand and eleven.
If there are no questions, I would entertain a motion to approve.
I move to acceptance second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please. Vice Mayor Bower?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously. We will now move to the regular calendar and the city attorney's office.
A resolution of the city council of the city of GALT, electing to serve as a successor agency and retain the housing assets and functions of the GALT redevelopment agency.
Good evening, Mayor, and council members. Back in the summer of two thousand and eleven, the state legislature passed two bills, AB twenty-six and AB twenty-seven. The first bill, AB twenty-six, invalidated, ended redevelopment agencies, and AB twenty-seven provided a mechanism for those entities to continue to exist by virtue of making voluntary payments. There was litigation filed shortly after the adoption of those bills by the California Redevelopment Agency, or Association. That litigation was filed in the California Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court made a determination right after Christmas, on December twenty-ninth, regarding those two bills. And what the Supreme Court determined was that the first bill, which ended redevelopment agencies in California, was in fact valid, and that the second bill, AB twenty-seven, which provided an opportunity for those agencies to continue to exist, was in fact invalid. There were several timeframes that were set out within AB twenty-six that had been extended by four months by the court, but the most immediate result of the court's decision on December twenty-ninth is that, at least right now, effective February one, the GALT redevelopment agency is going to cease to exist. What the legislation provides is that on February one, that a successor agency takes over the assets of the redevelopment agency, and starts through a process of unwinding the business and affairs of the agency. The other thing that occurs shortly after February one, sometime between February one and May one, is a group called the Oversight Committee comes into existence, and this body, its function is exactly as its name sounds, is to oversee the business of the successor agency. The Oversight Committee is made up of about seven members, two members appointed by the county board of supervisors, one appointed by the mayor, one appointed by a special district within the boundaries of the redevelopment agency, and then several from the community college and school entities. So, this group oversees the functioning of the successor entity. Two of the, the purposes of this item this evening are twofold. The first is to determine whether or not the city wishes to serve as the successor agency. What the legislation provides is that the city automatically becomes a successor agency for the redevelopment agency unless you take an affirmative step to decline that function. Now, what a lot of cities have been doing, just to avoid any ambiguity, is to affirmatively acting one way or another, to become the successor agency or not, and so, that is the recommendation this evening, that you act one way or another. The successor agency would be vested with any remaining authority, rights, powers, duties of the redevelopment agency. As I indicated, it would be responsible for winding down the affairs of the redevelopment If the, if the city elect, opts not to be the successor agency, then the county, or any city or special district, may elect by resolution to take on that role. The successor agency's granted a fair amount of power over the financial and planning issues in the community, and has the opportunity to decide how certain payments are going to be made, how certain assets are going to be disposed of, and generally, for overseeing development of projects that are currently underway. So, for those reasons, because of the ability to control this process, the recommendation by staff is that the city elect to be the successor agency for the GALT redevelopment agency. The second item before you tonight deals with housing functions, and what AB twenty-six also provides is an opportunity for the city to elect to retain affordable housing assets and functions. Now, this is not an automatic item. This is something that the city council needs to affirmatively choose to take on those assets and functions. Now, in this community, there is no property that is owned by the redevelopment agency, so we don't, in some communities, the redevelopment agency actually owns property and owns affordable housing. So, the assets and the functions for this particular community are basically going to be, there are certain loans that have been made over the life of the agency that are, have an obligation to be repaid, and so, the repayment on those affordable housing loans would be certain assets of the redevelopment, the housing function. Additionally, as housing has been built in this community, certain covenants and restrictions have been imposed on those affordable housing to ensure that they continue in existence for a period of years, and so, one of the functions that the city would assume would be to monitor and enforce those covenants and restrictions. Now, many of the housing functions that have been operated by the redevelopment agency would in fact cease because of the fact that the low mod money, which is about twenty percent of the tax increment received by the redevelopment agency, is not presently going to go along with the assumption of the housing functions. There are some bills being considered by the legislature to potentially change the allocation of funding, but at present, when you make the decision to take on the housing functions, it's not going to come with that low mod money, and so, there will not most likely be new housing development or new housing programs. It's basically going to be monitoring and overseeing those assets that currently exist. If the, if the city takes on this function, there's going to potentially be some administrative costs of taking on this program, and at present, it's unclear where those administrative costs would be, would be covered. It would not most likely be from redevelopment assets. The difficulty in making this decision is that in the event that the city chooses not to take on this role right now, then the, most likely, the state Department of Housing and Community Development would take on that function, and it would be very unlikely that the city would ever be able to step back into that role. If you assume the role now, while it's not provided for in the legislation, I would, I would suspect that there's an opportunity later on to elect not to continue that function and to turn it over to HCD. So, while a lot of these uncertainties relating to AB twenty-six are being sorted out, staff's recommendation at this point in time is that the city take on the function of the housing function and assets, and reassess whether or not this is an appropriate decision six months down the road as AB twenty-six is sorted out. So, the action, the action before you tonight is folded into one resolution, and it's a resolution to elect to serve as a successor agency, and to retain the housing assets and functions of the GALT redevelopment agency. I'd be happy to respond to any questions you may have.
Are there questions from the council members this time? I, I do have a question. Would you explain the low mod money that you mentioned that we would not have?
Currently, when the redevelopment agency receives tax increments, it's split into two pots of money. Eighty percent of the money is available for general redevelopment projects, and twenty percent is required to be spent on affordable housing projects. Under AB twenty-six, once the redevelopment agency ceases to operate, to the extent that there are any unencumbered funds within the low mod fund, the housing fund, that money would be turned into the county auditor for distribution to other taxing entities. It would not move to the agency that takes on the housing assets and functions.
Another question. Can you describe any kind of exposure we would have if we decide to become this successor agency, from litigation or whatever?
What AB twenty-six provides as it relates to successor agencies is that, to the extent that the successor agency is performing the duties granted to it under AB twenty-six, that they would not have any exposure beyond the assets of the redevelopment agency that they are succeeding. So, by assuming this role, it would not result in any exposure to the city's general fund or any other pots of money that the city has.
Okay, thank you. If there are- If there are no other questions, and if you, go ahead.
I just have a comment. I just think with the state trying to come in and the county trying to take over a lot of the responsibilities that we have, it's prudent that as cities, we continue to be in charge of our own destiny, you know, so I am going to vote for this for that reason.
Is that a motion?
Oh, yes, I move to accept the resolution.
Because you had a mayor, I think I heard some, members of the audience had some questions, so it might be appropriate to ask for any public comment if you desire.
I'm fine with that. Do you have any comments? Would you come forward and state your name and your place of residence, city of residence?
Rick Walters, and I live in the city of Galt. Are you going to wind this down, the Redevelopment Agency? Is it going to be ended?
Yes. What happens by this legislation on February 1 is that the Redevelopment Agency would cease to exist, and that the successor agency, its function is to wind down the affairs of the Redevelopment Agency under the oversight of the Oversight Committee.
Okay, are you in negotiation right now for property, under the Redevelopment Agency?
No, we were in negotiation, but under AB 26, it required, or provided that no, no new contracts could be entered into, once that legislation was in faith, in place, and so at that point in time, the city ceased to negotiate for property acquisition.
Are the properties on 4th and B and all that we're hearing about, is that, is that going to go forward?
That's, that is under, under consideration, and one of the, the options of the successor agency, once that body is in place, is the successor agency has the ability to proceed to finish unfinished business of the Redevelopment Agency in, in addition to expending existing bond proceeds, and so there may be a proposal in the future by the successor agency to acquire and redevelop certain properties. If there is such a proposal made by the successor agency, that would be presented to the Oversight Board, and they would have the ability to approve or not, or to approve or not approve that recommendation.
Okay, and the $17 million that, that the Redevelopment Agency has already borrowed, will any of that money be paid back?
Paid back to?
The state, for the schools and so on and so forth.
The bond, the bond proceeds are for the, for the purposes identified in the indenture at the time that the bonds were issued, tho, those monies would not be transferred to the other taxing entities. They would either be utilized for the projects as identified in the bond documents, or potentially to repay those bonds through a defeasance process.
Okay, and last question, the administration fees, are they going to be paid from the general fund or from the Redevelopment Agency fund?
They are going to be-
For the successor, for the successor?
The successor agency is, is allowed to charge administrative fees and extract those fees from the assets of the Redevelopment Agency up to a maximum of $250,000.
Okay, thank you very much.
Did you mention who was going to be on the Oversight Committee? In case, I'm sorry, okay. Not specifically, but what the process is.
I can review those again.
We can come back to that, it's okay, let, this gentleman.
I'm John White, live here in Galt. Can you, can you go over one more time the purpose of the Oversight Committee in terms of, the, the city gets the, the asset back, but we're not responsible for debt service? Are we off the hook, or is that, is that what's going on here?
Well, the, the purpose of the Oversight Committee is that the successor agency has the obligation to unwind, to finish the business of the Redevelopment Agency. There's a lot of different ways that that can be accomplished, and so the successor agency needs to come up with an approach to wind down the business of the agency, make certain recommendations to the Oversight Committee, and the Oversight Committee would approve the approaches recommended by the successor agency before it implemented those, those wind downs. The other thing is that there are existing contracts in place, and one of the functions of the Oversight Committee is to essentially serve as a fiduciary, in a fiduciary role to ensure that entities that are supposed to receive funds pursuant to those existing contracts do in fact get paid.
Will there be disputes between the Oversight Committee and the city because of that?
I don't think there'll be disputes because of the fact that the Oversight Committee has, gets to make the ultimate decision. So the city as successor agency will make recommendations to this body, and that body will make a final decision as to how the agency is unwinding.
So we have no idea of the experience that, I mean, this is a new thing, right?
It's a very new thing.
The, the politics of the, do we have any idea how this is going to go, or do you have any concerns?
No, I don't have any idea how it's going to go, and I have a lot of concerns, and we're doing our best at the local level to try to understand and implement the, the program that's been given to us by our state legislators.
God bless Jerry Brown.
Thanks, John.
Would you say, city attorney, that this Oversight Committee that we're talking about is similar, so everyone can sort of try to get a hold of this, to the Measure R Oversight Committee that looks at how we're administering the, the Measure R money correctly? Over, they're overseeing the actions of the successor agency?
Well, I think that the, there might be some similarities, but I think that the, the function of this Oversight Committee called for in AB 26 is a lot more pervasive than the Citizens Oversight Committee under Measure R, because this particular Oversight Committee is going to look at a list of, of existing contracts and payments that the Redevelopment Agency needs to make, and actually approve each expenditure of funds. To the extent that the Redevelopment Agency desires to purchase property or to dispose a property, that would also be under the auspices of the Oversight Committee, so-
More complicated.
It's, it's pretty, it's pretty broad.
I, I have a comment. I, I think everyone realizes, but not just this city is in this dilemma, we're, we're all this way throughout the state, and reiterate what you had said about our present governor, you know, unfortunately, he's doing what he thinks best, doesn't matter, we have, doesn't say that we have to agree with it, but we're in a catch 22. You know, we've got, in my opinion, we have to do the successor, we have to move forward with this, because I do not want the state to tell us what we will and will not do.
Okay, thank you.
If you were ready for the second on the motion. Didn't mean to cut anyone off.
Before we move on to the motion, though, did you have a comment?
No.
Or question?
No.
Councilman Cruz?
Don't get me started.
Okay.
Mayor, let me just, I just want to say something really quickly, because this is really a, a mess that the legislature has, has started, and we're trying to do our best and figure out exactly what we're going to do, and I really want to commend our city attorney and our finance director for really digging into this stuff, staying on top of it. I know the council members have followed this, there's all kinds of, every day, there's different things that are coming out, there's a lot of ambiguities, contradiction in the laws, it's going to have to be a lot of cleanup language, and every single city that has a Redevelopment Agency, which is by far most of the cities, over 400 redevelopment agencies in the state of California, are struggling with how to understand, how to implement this legislation, and it's not, it's not over, it's not done, it's going to be continued, there's going to be continued questions, continued concerns. We have a lot of concerns with how this is all going to be, all this, this is all going to go down, but rest assured, your, your staff is going to stay on top of it, we're going to continue to consult with the Lake California Cities, California Redevelopment Association, other attorneys throughout the state, and try to figure out what it all means and how we best proceed in the manner which the legislature intended, even if we don't believe it's in the best interest of the state or our communities. We're obligated to follow the laws that are imposed on us by the state, and that's what we're trying to do our best to do.
Thank you. Would you repeat the action that we'll be voting on?
Absolutely. Adopt a resolution electing to serve as the successor agency and retain the housing assets and functions of the Galt Redevelopment Agency.
And I believe we have a motion from Vice Mayor Powers, correct, and a second?
How a second?
We have two seconds, one from Councilman Shelton and-
I vocalize mine.
Okay. If there are no other questions, I will call for the vote. We'll call a vote. Vice Mayor Powers, Councilman Singleton.
Hi.
Councilman Shelton.
Hi.
Councilman Cruz.
Hi.
Mayor Ping. Aye. Motion has passed unanimously. Ready to move on to the next item?
Community Development Department, Action Plan for Development Permit Streamlining.
In an effort to improve customer service and maintain a competitive edge in the region, the Community Development Department, which is comprised of the Planning, Building, and Code Enforcement Divisions, has evaluated its procedures, its processes and forms, and identified a number of measures that staff thinks will improve the entire development permit process. This also satisfies objective number five of the city's strategic objectives for the six-month period ending January of 2012. The measures that are in your staff report were categories, categorized under five or four major goals. One, to improve applicant communication and convenience. Two, to improve permit processing tools. Three, to improve interdepartmental and agency coordination. And four, to reduce applicant costs. Each measure was also assigned a priority classification of A, B, or C. A being short-term implementation, meaning zero to nine months, and requiring sort of minimal staff time and minimal cost. B, more medium-term implementation, we estimate nine to 18 months with more significant staff investment. And C being long-term implementation, 18 to 24 months, and C priorities would be tied to budget funding in most cases. Although a number of ideas were generated related with the public works staff, related to improving coordination between public works and community development, we decided that those discussions should wait until the Director of Public Works position is filled, and that person has a chance to familiarize himself or herself with the process, and then can make those commitments to changing the, the process. So staff intends to report back to City Council in about nine months as to the status of the Priority A measures, and we will also then initiate discussions with the Public Works Director at that time and come back with some additional ideas. On the screen, I won't go into all of them, but we'll kind of highlight a few of them. One of the items to improve applicant communication and convenience we identified was to conduct review of permit aging reports under our Trackett computer system. We can show how long a permit has been in process, and the intent is we will look at those reports at least twice a week, and I kind of flag those permits that seem to be lagging. A lot of times, the, the problem with our computer system is it doesn't identify applicant delays versus city or other department delays, and that is another one of the measures later on, is to try and come up with better metrics for tracking processing times, where we can cut those, those particular times out and show who's responsible for the additional delays. But this measure would be to at least track those that seem to be taking longer than normal, and then we can see if it's with the applicant or if it's with the city, and just contact the responsible parties and make sure that they, that that permit keeps moving.
Sandy, before you move on, on that aging process, will it be determined maybe by the square footage of the project, whereas maybe a small, small house will take less time to do than a larger one? I mean, how are you going to decide how much time you should be giving on each item, on each application?
I think the idea here is just to track them and make sure that they are moving along. Our permit specialists and our building inspector are pretty familiar with generally how long certain permits take. If it's a patio cover and it's sat with the, with a certain department or utility company for a couple of weeks, then we'll give them a call and say what's going on with that patio cover. If it's a tenant improvement, then we'll probably wait a bit longer before we bother somebody, but just to know that it should be moving and it's, it's been sitting for a little bit.
For example, the Pizza Guy's building that we looked at, do you know about how long that process took to get the permit?
I think the whole process was about six months on Pizza Guy's. Another one of the ideas was to request approval of a blanket City Council resolution that would remove the condition on tentative subdivision maps that were approved with the condition that any change in their architecture constitutes a rezoning. This way, if a new developer comes in and picks up an existing approved tentative map and wants to do their own architecture rather than what was approved when the tentative map was approved, they would just have to go back to the Planning Commission at a notice public hearing, they wouldn't have to go to the Planning Commission and the City Council as a rezone. So that would be, it would expedite the timing and would also reduce the cost significantly for applicants. And there are, there are a number of maps that were approved with that condition.
Would the public hearing be at the Planning Commission?
It would.
Be at the same time?
It would be our recommendation. We'll come back to council with, with a, an actual staff report on that, that issue, but that would be, that was the idea that we came up with.
Okay.
Another one is that we would like to begin sending email updates to applicants at key points in the process. So for someone who submits a patio cover building permit, they would get an initial email basically saying, "We received your application, here's gen, the general process that will go through, you'll be notified at these different stages." Once it's approved by Building, Planning, and Fire, for example, they would get another email saying it's been approved by these agencies, you'll need to remit your final payment and the permit can be issued. And we'll identify those key points in the process and then send emails to whoever they identify on their application.
Don't we have that at the counter now where the, the process that will happen whenever they apply for a permit, where they could have that copy immediately?
Yes, we do have a, sort of a flow chart and description, but this is sort of an, an email notification that they'll get.
Is it on our webpage, this process? Is it on our city webpage if someone wanted to go and see what is the process? Do we have it there, do you know?
I know John's in the audience. Do you know, is it on, on your website, John? Okay, on a website. the different stages that it goes through, the different agencies, the different departments that it has to go through, that, that's sort of the, the flow chart that we have.
One of the things that you have listed here that you plan to do is to look at other jurisdictions and see what they're doing. And I know the county of Sacramento has a real nice step-by-step rather than the flow chart. It was just, here's number one, number two, number three, we might take a look at that in the future.
We will. Thank you.
The other thing, it's nice to be- The other thing, it's nice to be doing the same thing in GALT as much as we can as, say, the Sacramento County process is. You know, just to be consistent.
Yeah, there is a movement right now, it's called Region Builders, that you're probably familiar with. They are trying to work with different jurisdictions. They've kind of started with City of Sacramento and have now started working with the County of Sacramento. And the idea is to try and standardize the jurisdictions in the region. We've been trying to sort of get into that loop. Right now, it's a membership fee, so we'll probably address that in the next budget cycle. But we are, we are interested and have expressed interest in receiving information from them regarding their streamlining issues. The city clerk did ask me to just reiterate for the tape, our building inspector's comments, that the flow chart is not currently on the website.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, Senator.
Yeah.
I have something I'd ask. Is there currently a way that, say, a home builder or developer can track the progress of that application online?
No, there's not.
Is that some consideration possibly? The reason I'm asking is because it's a better way for, say, a developer to plan what he's going to have coming up in the future.
Yes, it is something that is on our list. It would involve a new computer Trackett system and update. It's called E-Trackett.
Okay.
And so that would be something that we will probably address in the next budget cycle.
Okay.
And if that is funded, then we can proceed with that. But we do think that at least the email correspondence with the applicants will be helpful to them.
No, that's great. I just was hoping to follow up with the way to track where the application is in the process so they can better plan ahead what they're going to be, who they're going to have come after their site next.
Yes. Another one is investigate ways to develop better metrics for tracking permit processing times. Again, the current process, it doesn't deduct time delays caused by other agencies or the applicant. We're looking to see if a customized report can be created by the Trackett system or again, upgrading to Trackett Nets or Trackett.net. We also want to hold discussions with outside plans, our outside plan check firm, the Fire District and County Environmental Management Department to see if their permit crossing times can be better tracked reported. Currently, we don't have any control over that. They have to submit separately to the Fire District for a plan check. And sometimes when they make a revision to the plans based on a comment by our building department or our outside plan check firm, it will affect the set that's at the Fire District and they have to go through another plan check with the Fire District. So, we're looking to try and better coordinate that review as well. We've also started some training whereby the permit specialist will periodically accompany the building inspectors in the field to get a better real-world understanding of the various typical projects, the terminology, the correction notices, that sort of thing. So that then, the permit specialist is the one that typically is working with the applicants and can better explain information to applicants and to homeowners when they come in. Similar concept of the public works staff goes out in the field when they're reviewing building permit applications and identify any public improvements that need to be done, sidewalk cracks fixed, sewer cleanouts installed. So, the permit specialist and the building inspector will start accompanying the public works staff on a few so that they get better informed and can also help relay that information to applicants more precisely. We'd like to consider the feasibility of developing a program, at least during these economic conditions, whereby certain minor building permits perhaps could be put on sale at certain times of the year. We could, for example, have the month of July where we reduce or waive permit fees for patio covers and similar things like that to try and spur some investments, provide a service to the community. It wouldn't be a significant financial impact to the city, but it's something we would like to look at and see if City Council would support that. And those are pretty much some highlights of the A priorities that we would look at initiating immediately. Once all of the As are done or at least been considered by City Council, then we would move on to the Bs. And in the next budget cycle, we would also address a lot of the C priority issues. That concludes my report. If I should have any questions?
Any questions? Obviously, a lot of time and hard work has been put in on this and just want to appreciate it. From the audience, would you like to come up and give your thoughts?
Mike, Gentry General Park Company, Mayor, council members. I've gone over this document and I don't want to take time. I just want to know where I can sit down with somebody and go over some of the things that I think is important after being in this town for twenty-five years building houses. I'd sure like to be able to say a few words about this, but it's going to take more time and I think I want to get into tonight. But there are some things in here I think is really important for developers and for home builders to, being able to do certain things and streamline some things that I think is important in this business.
What do you think, city managers?
Definitely sit down with Mike and go over the things that you think are the priorities. And Sandy and her staff did a great job putting together this list and certainly tried to prioritize those things that we thought were important to do first. But more than welcome your comments on, make sure we're on the right track in developing the real key issues for developers within the community.
Appreciate it very much.
I think the real goal on this project was to be more customer-friendly, so I'm sure they'd be happy to get the input. Okay, do you want to read the, are there any other comments from the audience or council? If not, would you read the recommended actions?
I will. Consider the proposed Action Plan for Process Improvement and Development Permit Streamlining and direct staff to proceed with implementation in the order of priority recommended in the plan or provide alternate directions.
Okay, you've heard the recommended action. Is there a motion to that effect?
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept.
I think it was your turn, Mike.
Was it? Okay. Was it true?
We have a first, we have a second. We have a first and a second. No call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Powers.
Hi.
Councilmember Singleton.
Hi.
Councilmember Shelton.
Hi.
Councilmember Cruz.
Hi.
Mayor Ping.
Aye. Motion passed unanimously. Okay, next item, please.
Next item is rental of Chabola Community Center.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. At the December twentieth council meeting, council has said the policy regarding the use of the Chabola Center be revisited. Give you some background. On October fourth, two thousand and five, the City Council approved the discontinuing rental of the Chabola Center for private engagements and events. Included in your packet is a staff report that was presented to City Council in two thousand and five. The Chabola Center is currently used Monday through Saturday afternoons with little to no use on weekend nights or Sundays. The center hosts the Senior Club, Parks and Rec Youth Basketball Program, special interest classes, and the Senior Lunch Program, Meals on Wheels. Meals on Wheels currently uses the dining, or the hall area for dining and the kitchen area to store their supplies and cook their meals. For this reason, staff is recommending the council adopt a resolution allowing the Chabola Center to be used for non-resident, excuse me, for resident nonprofit organizations with the exception of the kitchen area and establishing a rental fee of three hundred dollars per day and fifty dollars per hour for the Chabola Center hall rental.
Any comments or questions from the council?
I have a comment and Armando, you and I already discussed this. I work for nonprofits and everyone knows that. And most of the nonprofits in this town are organizations that give back to the community and they have these fundraisers just for that purpose. They have a fundraiser and all of the money they make goes back to help some specific project that they are familiar with in the city. It's my personal opinion that the community center should be used free for nonprofits that are 501(c)(3)'s. Most of them are all volunteers. They don't receive any money for the things they do. And in these hard economic times, I really feel it's important that as a city, we work together to make sure that the citizens of our city are getting some of the benefits that they wouldn't otherwise get if people weren't holding these fundraisers. The other thing is most of these fundraisers do involve food of some kind, so I also don't approve of closing the kitchen. And my thought would be also that this would pertain to both the Chabola Center and to the Littleton Center. Adjust for 501(c)(3)'s nonprofit organizations in our city that give back to the city.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Yes, we're on...
Councilman Shelton?
A little bit of the same page. I have a, I have a proposal. I mean, it is difficult and I believe that at this time that we, the city, should do what we can for those resident nonprofit organizations. So, I would like to propose the following. No fee use, but a hundred and fifty dollar cleaning deposit. You know, the use of the kitchen. And it's kind of like this. I was raised by my parents. If you make a mess, clean it up. That's the bottom line. So, most people, I think, are probably pretty good, that even private, that clean up. But I would like for this proposal to move forward with a stipulation too that this lasts for one year and is brought back to council.
For review?
For a review. I think it makes sense that we would be able to do this for the short time. I don't know if we need to hear from staff, if we can propose to do it now or we need to bring it back. But that's my feelings.
Okay. Let's see if we have any other...
With that window of one year.
Let's see if we have any other comments along the same line.
Questions? Armando. Just for example, if you have a private person in the Chabola Center and they have a party of some type, do you charge them already a deposit for that kitchen area?
Currently, the Chabola Center isn't available for rental. The Littleton Center...
Okay, whatever, see it at the center then, okay.
The Littleton Center, there is a five hundred dollar deposit. I'm sorry, for a non, for a 501(c)(3), it's five hundred dollars.
Okay, what would it cost our staff if they did not? Let's say that, do we soak up all of that deposit money if our staff has to clean up after a party?
I believe the rate is thirty-five dollars per hour, however long it takes us to clean up the facility.
So, you don't have an average of any kind that we can base that on?
I would have...
I'm thinking, Councilman Shelton's a little low on deposits, is all I'm thinking. And, but other than that, I agree with what he had to say. I think five hundred is a little bit too much, but that's just me.
Well, I don't think he's too low. Most nonprofits in this town. And the funny thing is, most of us are all...
Oh, I'm not saying...
Attached one way or another to a nonprofit in this town. I, uh...
No, I don't...
They don't have that much money. Yeah.
I don't have a problem with nonprofits. I'm just saying anybody that comes in. I didn't know if we were just talking specifically only the nonprofits or we're talking about anybody. Nonprofits, no, that's...
Yeah, we're specifically talking nonprofits, correct, Armando?
Yes.
Okay, and that's why in my comment, I said the resident nonprofit organizations, I think that's the term you used.
Well, the term that...
Okay. The proper term is?
Well, the definition that we used, resident nonprofit, didn't include specifically only 501(c)(3)'s. I think that's what you're recommending.
Now, will we right now charge them five hundred dollars?
Currently, the rate is for Littleton is four hundred a day, sixty, or sixteen an hour, and five hundred dollar deposit.
That's what I'm asking, deposit, five hundred dollars?
I don't think we distinguish between a nonprofit and a 501(c)(3). In other words, the Chamber of Commerce is a nonprofit, but they're not a 501(c)(3). So, you want to make that distinction, that separation between the two? In other words, a nonprofit would pay the nonprofit rate, but a 501(c)(3) would have a different rate. Is that what you're saying?
Well...
That's what the Vice Mayor was suggesting.
Okay, well, um, well, then here we go, splitting hairs. But to me, it's, the thing is, the intent of when these people have these fundraisers is not to raise the money for themselves, it's to give back to the community. If somebody's having a big hoo-ha and they want to keep the money themselves and they're not giving it back for what their purpose is, so I don't know, which we could say 501-whatever, you know, and you'll know what it's for.
Right.
There are some organizations that, you know, use their fundraising money for other things, which...
And I like Mr. Shelton's idea. I do agree with that. But I do also agree that it should be an organization that we, is going to be given back to the community.
We're not, staff is not going to be able to make a determination whether they give back adequately to the community. There's going to be a nonprofit...
Nothing with adequacy is to do with, say, if it's a brown bagging or, you know, some of these organizations that actually are servicing our community. Not necessarily whether they're classified as nonprofit.
So...
Well, I think the term is the resident nonprofit.
Okay, resident.
That's what I'm keying in on.
Yes. So, the same definition we've always used, resident, because right now, there's a separate rate for resident. I think it's called resident nonprofit. Armando?
Resident nonprofit.
And what's the definition of resident nonprofit?
Definition of resident nonprofit organization, including civic groups such as the Lions Club, Rotary Club, Chamber of Commerce, and churches provided that the activity to raise funds for the benefit of the church or the parish that resides in the city of Galt. Included in the group are any community groups whose bylaws or governing charter establishes the groups as a nonprofit group.
Okay, then let's just call nonprofits for the sake of nonprofits.
You're okay with that definition?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Councilman Shelton, were you trying to make a motion to your...
Or chase the people on?
Would you like to make a motion?
Well, I would like to make a motion, but now I'm a little puzzled as to, as Mary Lou mentioned, splitting hairs. So, my comment was for, apparently, there's two different definitions. To me, a nonprofit's the nonprofit. That's a resident nonprofit. You're telling me it's different?
That's what I just said. The question of the council is the definition that Armando just read, is that what you're talking about by a nonprofit organization?
I bet I thought you said then 501 or something.
Well, that was the original question. I think the original comment was, we want to limit this only to 501(c)(3)'s. And if that was the case, and that's different than our current definition, and then if the council wants to go with the current definition that we use, it's not just limited to 501(c)(3)'s. It's limited to any resident local nonprofit organization, which I think is the Vice Mayor indicated that she was comfortable with that.
Right.
And you and your...
I just wanted to restate that that's what it was. The guys threw out too many definitions.
Yeah, we're not, so what you have in front of you tonight is not that. So, we'd have to bring this back at a future meeting. One of the things I did want to make sure that the council understands is that we have, there's a lot of staff time involved in setup of these events as well as take-down and cleanup of the events. And so, those would be costs that would be eaten by the city and would not be recovered if the council wants to move forward with that. I'd say we can't do that. I'm just saying to make sure that you understand that there are costs. The parks maintenance staff that comes and sets up and takes down, those would be costs that would just be absorbed within the Culture Recreation City General Fund.
You mean if we only charged a hundred and fifty?
Or if you charged nothing. That was the recommendation, was there'd be no, no cost other than the deposit. But the deposit would only be used if the place was trashed and we needed it to do some extra cleaning.
Right. And that was my other reasoning for mentioning for a one-year duration only.
Right. City Attorney, do you have? Do you have comments?
And Mayor, another option you have, because I know that one, one group was under a time constraint as far as your decision tonight, is you could act by motion tonight and then direct staff to bring back a resolution that embodies that motion at the subsequent meeting. I think it's important ultimately to get the resolution so we have a good record of your, of your action. So, if you would desire to do it, I'd recommend that you entertain a motion to authorize the renting of the Chabola Center for resident nonprofit organizations at, at no cost. And direct staff to bring back a resolution that embodies that, that motion for consideration and action at the next meeting.
One of the, one of the questions that has come up is the use of the kitchen at the Chabola Center. And it's problematic for a variety of reasons. One of my suggestions might be that if... Um, and it's problematic for a variety of reasons, one of my suggestions might be that if you, um, are, would like to have the nonprofits use our facilities at no additional cost, that we, and, and if they want to use a kitchen, that we would de, direct them to the use of the Littleton Center. That way, they can still use the center at no cost, they can use the kitchen, which is set up for community groups to use. Let me ask Armando to talk about the problems, um, using the Chabola Center kitchen imposes on the, on the staff and the use of that kitchen that we have right now. Um, and if you have both that are available, there's not really any reason why a group couldn't use the Littleton Center, it's zero cost either way.
The reason that, uh, the recommendation for, um, excluding the kitchen is that the Meals on Wheels program uses the kitchen area to prepare their meals, they have a refrigerator in that kitchen where they store their product, uh, milk, fruits, bread, um, there's equipment from the Meals on Wheels program that does not belong to the city, it's a conve, convection oven, that is used to cook the meals, um, there's, they keep insulated delivery bags there for the drivers to come and pick up their stuff, baking sheets, service carts, just a lot of miscellaneous stuff that is stored in that area, because nobody else has access to it. We do run some of our, our city programs out of the kitchen, we will use, um, basically the mic, microwave for our starch program to heat up things, or serve lunch, and that type of thing, but there, there's really, and that's city staff inside that, that building.
The refrigerator belongs to the city, or to Meals on Wheels?
The refrigerator belongs to the city.
Okay. And just to describe, and I know we've had a discussion about this, most of the meals are, uh, frozen dinners, and, uh, they're served on whatever they come in, as a frozen dinner, and the utilities are also disposable. Uh, and I think, at this time, we also have the cabinets lockable, where, um, some of the utilities could be, or some of the things that were exclusively, um, belonged to the Meals on Wheels, could be kept separate. And I know that they would prefer to not have anyone go in there at all, they've expressed that very strongly, and they do a great service to the community, but by the same token, we're limited as to what we can, uh, offer to the community, and we just kinda have to make the most of what we've got and share with, with each other, um, that would be my comment on that.
Any other comments? The Littleton Center's available, there's not really any need for the Chabola Center, they basically have the same purpose, and the kitchen facilities are, are not used for any other function at the Littleton Center.
Well, I'm saying, thinking the Littleton gives us a little more, um, access for use, because the Littleton is used quite a bit, uh, and maybe it's just me, but the Littleton then looks a lot larger than the Chabola Center, which you may not want or need that much area for a smaller event, or something.
The occupant load for the Littleton Center is, for dining, is four hundred and, I'm guessing, do you know what the occupant?
For the Littleton Sen, I believe, Littleton Center, I think it's like, it's right around the four hundred mark.
Okay.
For dining.
Okay, the Chabola for dining?
I'm not sure of that number.
About two?
Uh, I, I couldn't even guess at that number, sorry.
Okay. Give me the square footage, I can calculate for you, but no, I know that there's, there are smaller, and I concur with Mary Lou and Barbara, there are, it, it will cause maybe a little issue, but, uh, that was one of the reasons why my proposal was basically to do this for one year, and I know there are organizations that maybe only are going to have something for a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five people, and if you put that many people in the Littleton Center, don't get me wrong, the Littleton Center, I've been at both, the acoustics is terrible.
Yeah.
So, I mean, if you're talking to somebody, or calling off a raffle in the Littleton Center, even with a P A system-
Yeah.
And I know my heart, my hearing is getting bad, too, but I mean, seriously, uh, I would just, I would prefer for it to, uh, be for both. Uh, you, we've already asked, uh, I'm prepared for, to continue the motion, um, or, you know, propose the motion, and, uh, staff would be coming back. And I agree with, uh, Councilman Shelton also, I think that makes sense to me.
Okay, so, um, the direction that I heard from our city attorney was to go ahead and, and take a vote to approve the resolution, but direct staff then to come back with another resolution?
Well, the, the goal this evening was first to act by motion, to authorize the use of the Chabola Center without a rental fee, um-
For who?
For resident nonprofit organizations, so that would open the ability for agencies to come forward after tonight, but then to come back with a resolution that spelled it out, uh, more specifically, and put it on consent calendar for council action at the next meeting, just so there's a, a clear record of what your, your, uh, direction is this evening.
Okay.
Let me just, I mean, get one, one clarification, so that we can bring back exactly what the council wants us to bring back. One of the items, other items on the agenda tonight was the revised security requirements, and there is a requirement that nonprofits, um, have security for events that have alcohol.
Right.
So, is the council still comfortable with that, those requirements, 'cause there's a cost with that, it's twenty-five dollars an hour per security guard.
Absolutely.
As we would say, that's a separate agenda item, but I believe I probably will concur, I'm sorry, usually, you're saying that to me as a council member, yeah.
Um, I think the city clerk asked to read, reread the motion out there, or the suggested action.
So, tonight, council's gonna authorize the use of the Chaboya Center for residence, resident nonprofit organizations at no cost, and direct staff to bring back at the next meeting a resolution which embodies this, this motion.
Can we add the Littleton to that? Just a question.
Okay, do you want?
I was trying to hear what Mary Lou was saying.
Could we add the Littleton Center to that, too?
I think the resolution would come back that would have both, but the motion tonight is just for LaHeim to use Chabola.
Okay.
Right, that's, right, that's what-
Yeah.
Okay, that's what, I was leaving the kitchen out.
I was only, I was trying to get through, LaHeim wants to use-
What are we doing?
Did we leave the, the use of the kitchen out?
Hmm, you, I thought it was included, the kitchen.
I thought it was left out the last time.
After the Chaboya Center includes, center, including the kitchen area?
Okay, including the use of the kitchen.
Okay, you've heard the action, now, is there a motion to that effect?
My motion.
Second.
We have a first and a second, is there any other questions or discussion, if not, I'll call for the vote.
Wait, do you guys finger it?
Oh.
Just from staff?
Oh, okay.
Just the timeframe, when you feel you could bring it back, I don't know if we're talking like two weeks, the next council meeting, okay, all right.
The next, and, just one last, uh, was the hundred and fifty dollar, there was some di- discussion or disagreement on whether the hundred and fifty dollars was adequate deposit?
Uh, my proposal was to include the hundred and fifty dollar clean deposit. I'm good with, I'm good with it.
In the resolution that we bring back?
Right, mhm.
Including the, the kitchen and a-
Would that include the LaHeim?
It would include everyone, everyone, yeah.
Okay, once again, we have a motion, and we have a second, are we ready to vote? I think we are.
Vice Mayor Powers.
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton.
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz.
Aye.
Mayor Payne.
Aye, motion passed unanimously, and we'll look for a resolution at the next council meeting, hopefully.
Thank you, Armando.
Armando, thanks.
As always.
This is the Police Department Appropriations Trans, Transfer of Measure R Funds for Hiring of New Dispatchers, C S O.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, before you tonight is a request for appropriations transfer of Measure R Funds for the hiring of a new dispatcher, C S O. November two thousand eight, the citizens of Galt voted for a half-cent sales tax for public safety. The Measure R Initiative called for the hiring of seven officers and two dispatch C S Os. Currently, five officers and one dispatcher have been hired. Council approved the hiring of the sixth Measure R officer in the current two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve budget, and staff is recommending that the hiring of one more dispatcher, C S O, in lieu of the current budgeted police officer. Staff plans to develop the community service side of the dispatch C S O, currently, all the dispatcher C S Os are assigned to dispatch, so we can provide a valuable, uh, support to not only the field personnel, but to different areas of the police department. Staff believes that the dispatcher, C S O, is more important to the department than an additional police officer at this time, and the reason for the proposed change. Approval of the change will fulfill the Measure R requirement of two dispatch C S O positions, and staff is recommending that transfer be approved. I should mention that, uh, this purpo, proposed change was, um, discussed on two different occasions with the Measure R Oversight Committee, with the, uh, last meeting being on, uh, December second, two thousand eleven. Um, this ends my presentation, unless, uh, there was any ca, questions?
I think we have, uh, a, we have a speaker sheet, if we could go ahead and do that, and then we'll come back to questions from the council. Al Baldwin?
Good evening, Al Baldwin, you know, the concerned citizen of Galt, the city of character, and what made my light go off with this per, this proposal, it says, "Transfer of Measure R Funds for Hiring of New Dispatcher." And I guess, if the Oversight Committee discussed this, then they must've said, "I'm all for letting you take some of our money and putting it into this," now, it's gonna go into the general fund, I'm assuming, I'm gonna try and do this in three minutes, I'm gonna really try. The Measure R Initiative called for hiring seven police officers and two dispatchers, or C S Os, Measure R was passed by sixty-seven point nine percent of the voters in two thousand eight, and then we had to wait for tax funding to hire new officers. We have five patrol officers and one dispatcher, and one officer is grant funded for one more year, I believe, it's one more year, and then Measure R funding takes over on him. So, we have been using Measure R funds for this one grant, as I understand. The annual funding for this dispatcher position is forty-one thousand four hundred eighty-four to fifty thousand four hundred, with the class code of four zero one oh three. Measure R was not to be used to transfer funds to the general fund to help hire police, to hire police force, it was to be used only to hire more police after the city reached its full requirement. I'm assuming the city has already reached its full requirement with dispatchers, I could be wrong, 'cause I don't know. By taking money out of the dispatcher, you shorten the time to get more Measure R street officers. Do we have seven Measure R police officers yet? Does the city have a full force of dispatchers yet? Do we have funding for one more police officer yet? I would like to hear from the Oversight Committee on what they think. Apparently, they've gone over this, but they, uh, I, I don't think they have, totally. Uh, the documentation showed that there were no transfers of funds into Fund Forty-seven from the general fund, nor were there transfers of funds out of the Fund Forty-seven into the general fund, and confirms compliance with Section three point four oh, point one five oh, which states, "No revenues collected pursuant to the tax levied becomes, uh, where we go, tax levied hereby may be spent on general fund operating expenses in effect at the time this ordinance becomes effective, or projects that are not a part of the police services expenditure plan. Revenues collected hereafter shall supplement rather than replace existing city expenditures for police services as reflected in the two thousand, uh, eight vote." The, uh, from some of the minutes that I've had, and I'm not gonna be able to make it, but it's very important, and I'd like to request a minute or two more to get this thing all out.
I think we can answer some of your questions, 'cause I think, before you, and then you can have, maybe have a chance to go on, but I think what you're indicating is not really-
Trying to put three minutes into this thing.
Is not really accurate according to what's happening.
Yeah, I'd like to.
Not transferring money from, from Measure R to the general fund, it's a transfer from one Measure R account into another Measure R account.
Well, it says on here, it says, "Transfer of Measure R Funds for Hiring of New Dispatchers," but-
All we're doing is, right now, Measure R calls for the hiring of two dispatchers, we have hired one so far, so what we're doing is, is wanting to hire the second dispatcher out of, using Measure R funds. There's no transfer of funds from the general fund, or into the general fund, or out of the general fund, it's just saying, instead of hiring a new officer right now, we think it's more important to hire the dispatcher that's identified in Measure R, but that's the recommendation of the, of the police chief.
Are we, uh, fully, uh, filled with dispatchers now for the city?
No.
Well, you can't take from Measure R unless you are, is that correct, or not?
Are you talking about the city?
Well-
You mean the, the general fund?
With, with the general fund-
Yes, we're fully staffed with the general fund dispatchers.
How many do you have dispatchers? I didn't, I couldn't find out, so I'm just asking.
We currently have eight dispatchers, one of them being a lead dispatcher.
One of them is what?
A lead dispatcher.
Okay, so, you got that many dispatchers, and, plus, plus the extra one from Measure R?
That includes the Measure R one.
That includes the Measure R.
That includes, so without Measure R, what would be the quota that they should have, seven? And they're part-time?
No, they're full-time employees.
All full-time?
Yes.
And you can't use any of these, because the C S O part of it, right? Because they're, they're not dispatching, they're going out, doing public service, all of them?
No, they're all dispatching, and that's one of the, one of the issues.
Why can't they do that? Why can't they be part of that public service, then, like the description says?
That's what we're trying to get to. What, what's going on as far as the transfer? A Measure R officer has been approved in this current budget of two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve. I don't want to hire that officer, I want to hire the dispatcher, which will put it with the two dispatchers that are required for Measure R. So, the transfer is the fact that the money for Measure R for that officer has been allocated or appropriated, and what I wanna do is transfer that back into the Measure R fund, and hire a dispatcher to do the C S O function, because right now, the only thing we have is dispatchers. C S O function would be property clerk and, and several other things, we're trying to come up with a succession plan, so that as people leave the department, uh, people retire, that we have people knowing the other person's job, besides providing, uh, services to the field as far as evidence collection and what have you, that doesn't take a officer and can be performed by a community service officer.
Well, uh, according to the minutes of the last Oversight Committee, the salary range, and this is from coming from your website, or the police website that I looked up for job description, four oh one oh three, says the salary is thirty-four fifty-seven to forty-two hundred a month, forty-one thousand four hundred per year, or fifty thousand four hundred. The revised budget is seventy-five thousand in the Measure R. Now, and you've already used sixty-nine thousand. So, am I, am I seeing something wrong here, or different? Okay, in, in the minutes, if you look from the minutes, and it, and it's got it in there, that the, uh, and, and it's on, I haven't got the page here, whatever, but there's no page on it. It's, uh, the public safety, one where it says, "Dispatch, C S O," and if you look across it, the first one is seventy-five thousand, then it goes to six thousand nine twenty-one, then it goes to sixty-nine thousand ninety-nine dollars, what, what is that? I'm just asking, 'cause you, you were there, I mean, you know, you, you were presented this to them at the last meeting. Well, it's, it's, well, it's, I think it's next to the last page, it could be, and there's no numbers on the page that I can see, and it's where it's, is dispatcher, C, CFO, or C, C S O, there. Okay.
That, that was, are you looking at the minutes of the last council meeting?
Mhm, well, not the couns, well, this is the approval of the minutes of the last council meeting, that was taken from the Oversight Committee, that was presented to them at that meeting.
Um, what, what-
The la, the next to the last amount.
Okay, what was, what is presented here is a copy of the expenditure report, and it was for, um, the last fiscal year, for the last fiscal year, there was a budget of, in the, um, dispatcher, C S O division, um, a budget of seventy-five thousand dollars, just over that, there was an actual expenditure of sixty-nine thousand, so this was for the last fiscal year.
Why was it so high if you only had one taken out of Measure R?
Well, ju-
I'm just-
I could answer that, the position itself for the, for the one year reflects for a full year, the, the request that's happening this evening is for a five-month period, and it's from February first through June thirtieth, so this actually represents the salary and benefits related for one fiscal year, so it is higher than the transfer that's happening this evening, or is on the agenda, the amount that's being reflected this evening is just, they took the twelve-month salary and benefits, divided by twelve months, the annual amount, and multiplied by five, so the amount that you see this evening are only for a five-month period.
Well, I'm sure you can see my confusion on that, because when I look at the salary base of a police dispatcher, C S O, it's quite a bit lower, and I don't understand why it's so high.
Well, the seventy, the sixty-nine thousand is the true cost of a- Well, seventy, sixty-nine thousand is the true cost of a dispatcher for a full year, benefits and salary. The amount you see reflected in this item tonight is for a part of the year.
So, with the other dispatcher, it would be for one dispatcher six-
Then you would double that number, sixty-nine thousand times two.
That's what I'm saying. And you have that in Measure R, but that won't leave any money for an extra police for maybe, what, two or three years, extra officer? Is that correct? Nope.
The ending, right, the ending fund balance at this point, without considering this transfer funds or the amount that may revert back to Fund Forty-Seven, which is the Measure R fund, is six hundred and eleven thousand zero twenty at the end of budget for the current fiscal year. So, that's the estimated fund balance. And that's trying to take into account the additional, the continued funding of the cops-funded positions so forth out of Measure R. So, the ending fund balance at the end of this fiscal year, we're estimating just over six hundred thousand dollars.
So, you could hire another officer?
That's going to be up to the Oversight Committee.
Not the dispatcher, I mean another police officer.
It'll be evaluated as part of the upcoming budget.
Right, so the ending fund balance, available funds were six, just over six hundred thousand.
It just seems high.
Yeah, and the expenditure report that you presented was actually for the last fiscal year and it's above the salary and the salary-related benefits and so forth.
And you're increasing it for this next year, then?
It would be because you would have an additional dispatcher if approved by council this evening for a five-month period.
That wasn't in there, though, at the time when you made that increase, was it?
In this report?
Yeah.
No, this was for last fiscal year.
Right.
It ended on June 30th. No, absolutely not. This only reflected the budget for one dispatcher, one CSO.
Okay.
The request tonight is to change that to add the second dispatcher, CSO.
Well, as long as we get another police officer, but not the one that's being granted, and we can afford another police officer plus the one after the grant drops, that'd be two salaries coming out of Measure R, right? We can afford two salaries for two officers, or one new officer and one that's, well, be new because it's coming off the grant. So, we'd have two officers plus a dispatcher in Measure R funding. Is that correct or am I off?
We currently have five funded.
Right, you have five right now, you need two more.
Correct.
So, you could get two more officers plus a dispatcher with the funds in Measure R now.
We don't know that yet. It would have to be evaluated as part of the upcoming budget. What we do is we project out, even if we can afford it now, we project out five years to see because every officer starts at the lower end of the range. So, every year, medical expenses go up, salaries go up, and so, we want to make sure not only can we hire somebody this year, but can we sustain that level of expenditure-
Right.
-over a five-year period. We haven't done that yet to see if we can add an additional officer next year.
Well, you did have your five-year plan in here already, but possibly it's not-
We know we can add a dispatcher now, which is what we're recommending. We do not know for certain beyond that whether we can add any additional officers at this time.
We don't know what our revenue will be. We can budget, we can budget for-
But right now, you could do it if, you could do it, right? Because you have enough money in Measure R. So, Measure R is actually working, then?
Working very well.
Oh, yeah. And after seven officers, then what? You'll have excess money, right?
Hopefully.
Well, you, I mean, apparently, it's going to happen because you've got excess money now and it's a down economy.
Well, we don't know. We don't, I mean, we can only project and we can budget, but once we have the money in our hands-
Well, no, but I'm just wondering, once we get the seven officers on board and it's the other dispatcher, you can't use Measure R money for anything else, can you?
No, what happens is, once we meet the expenditure plan, then the council will revise the expenditure plan and determine with the police, the police chief, how to spend Measure R monies going forward. It has to be used for the police department, whether it's put into officers, dispatchers, vehicles, something to do, have it have to be used for the police department. And that will be determined in the future. We're not yet there yet. We haven't hired the seven officers or the two dispatchers. In the future, when we're to that point, that plan will be revised and we'll continue to move forward.
But hopefully, when Walmart comes, we get some more fair tax revenue.
And then you could almost, with Walmart here, for instance, with tax money, you could almost drop Measure R and give the city a half a cent credit, right? Or is Measure R going to be staying here forever?
Thank you, Al.
Well, Walmart should be good.
We'll contact and let you know as we figure this out.
No, I think it was important that we give a little more time on this because it is Measure R and it is an initiative. It's an agreement that we've made with the people. So, I think we've covered it pretty well and unless there's any other question.
Yeah, I got that question.
Councilman Singleton.
Chief, could you tell us why you feel the need for this transfer and the additional dispatcher? We have an issues with getting dispatchers to cover our shifts. And another twofold question is, officers on the street, are we well supplied with our officers and are we well-covered on both east and west side? Are we having any issues with shortage?
Not currently. The issue as far as for the dispatchers, the fact that you have to have support personnel. When I first arrived here in May, I sat down with the majority of people in the department and one of the questions I asked them was, "I have the availability as far as this pot of money, should I hire another officer? Should I hire a dispatcher?" From the officers and all the dispatchers was in fact that they need the support personnel to do their job. You end up, depending on what day of the week, say Wednesday, which is a double day, and we try to do training, so half the shift is off-training. But when that doesn't occur, you have one dispatcher providing all the services for all the people in the street for whatever their activity is. And if you don't have support personnel for them, they don't have anybody to tell them where to go or to receive data, information back in, you have a major problem. And I thought I recognized that as soon as I came in and it's obvious that the whole department recognized it because that was an overwhelming thing was they believed that in fact, we needed to put our efforts as far as Measure R into the support function as far as dispatch, CSO. Their title is unlike other places I have worked, that they're considered to be a community service officer and a dispatcher and currently, I have nobody doing any kind of CSO except for Lynn, who's in fact, the property evidence clerk. When we respond to any kind of a scene and we need assistance, we might not need a higher-paid officer to be there to collect evidence, to take pictures, to direct traffic or anything else. To have someone that we can pull, say, out of dispatch, if we have two in there, we can pull one out to give us a hand and then we can relieve those police officers back to duty as far as for calls for service. Otherwise, if you have them tied up, and the post office the other day was a perfect example of that, where we had basically the shift tied up directing traffic and we end up using CAPS volunteers. So, the support function and law enforcement, just like the military, is a very important process. And if you don't have the equipment or the support, then the frontline troops can't do the job. So, that's why I'm changing it. The recommended change was to hire that support staff and to reevaluate it on July with our newest budget and budget preparations to see in fact, if we can afford the officer that Mr. Baldwin was talking about.
Okay, so at this time, then, it is best for the city and its citizens to have this dispatcher as opposed to hiring another officer, which we don't, what I'm getting from you is we really don't need, we need the support from inside and if we need to pull them from that officer, we could, it would be better support at this time.
Yes. It wouldn't be a better decision to hire that CSO dispatcher than it would be to hire the officer. I do need the officer too, but in weighing the alternative-
Well, that's my-
The best one is in fact, the dispatcher and that's why I'm asking for the change.
Thank you, Chief.
Any other comments from the council or the audience? Okay, so, would you read the recommended actions that we're to vote on tonight?
Okay, tonight, council needs to approve the transfer of funds to the Measure R dispatch division from the patrol division to hire a new dispatcher, CSO, in lieu of the previously approved patrol officer.
Okay, is there a motion to that effect, please?
I'll make a motion.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Powell?
Hi.
Councilmember Singleton?
Hi.
Councilmember Shelton?
Hi.
Councilmember Cruz?
Hi.
Mayor Payne?
Aye. Motion is passed unanimously to support the chief's recommendation.
Next item.
Public Works Department, Twin Cities Road Roundabouts Landscaping.
Members of the council, I've been here two and a half months and this is my first chance to really talk to you. It's a staff report. However, we have Jason Robertson from Omni Means, who actually did the landscape design work for the Twin Cities Road project. While he's getting set up for his PowerPoint presentation, I do want to mention that this was an interesting project for staff. We were very involved in looking at these concepts and I actually want to thank the planning department, both Sandy and Chris, for their input. You heard earlier from them about how they coordinate with Public Works, this was just the opposite way around. And they had a lot of comments and probably more than I thought they would and not all of them we agreed with, but we had a good time going through them and I want to thank them for their efforts. We also, of course, coordinated with the city manager. And so, we're going to kind of go through what we kind of settled on here, what we recommend and then kind of show you some of the backgrounds of how we got there. I do want to, before Jason starts, I want to mention that we'll be back to the council on this. Because this is in Caltrans right away, they of course, have a process to go through to get it approved by them. That process is going to require one, perhaps two resolutions for both the, what they call the gateway component and for the transportation art component. We're still kind of working through that with them, but we have had supplementary meetings and they do like the concept, so that was a very important step that they at least are buying into it early on. We didn't want to be showing you something that Caltrans is going to say no to. So, that was the good news. So, with that introduction, I will turn it over to Jason.
Well, Jason could make it this evening, but Scott Robertson is here with Omni Means Engineering. That's quite all right.
I apologize. I have it written down right here. Apparently, I can't talk and read at the same time.
That's fine. I've been called for it, so that's good. Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm Scott Robertson. I'm a landscape architect at Omni Means Engineering. It has been an adventure and a challenge, but a pleasing one at that to work through some of these ideas that we're going to bring forward before you this evening. Got this little presentation. Welcome questions anywhere along the way. It's not that long a presentation, but what we want to do is get a little background as to how we arrived at what we're going, what we're proposing. I think it's important to understand that because there's a lot of little caveats with this project. This evening, we want to talk about the functionality of the landscape. A lot of people consider landscape maybe as something extra, as a fluff. While it's nice and from my point of view as a designer, it's important, and I believe you do too, there are functional needs that the landscape does provide within a roundabout situation. Again, the design considerations and issues that provided the challenges for this project that brought us to the resolutions that we're going to present here. We'll review that concept, the ultimate concept, along with some of the earlier ideas, just giving overview of how we arrived there. And then again, we're looking for direction this evening to move forward, one way or the other with the concept or not. As indicated on this slide, Caltrans has, I will call it recently, in the past couple of years, adopted more standards for roundabouts because they are relatively new in the state of California, how the landscaping function is utilized. The main function of it is to help control the driver's visibility through the roundabouts and while many people may have witnessed or seen roundabouts in other communities where this is not the case, that's because standards have changed and they've discovered that it is important to try to distract the driver so they can't see through to the other side, etc. So, that becomes a large function with that. There's also an interest in providing some buffer between the pedestrian and automobiles along the roadways, along the edges, and the landscape can provide that buffer capability. And lastly, Caltrans and the state is very interested in the aesthetic portion of this and all transportation networks are encouraged and expected to have that aesthetic function in some way. This gives you a little brief overview of what one of the roundabout areas look like and how this see-through area needs to be accomplished. And one of the areas that the standards that they've looked at is they're looking for at least a six-foot-high area, pretty much in the middle and controlling off to the sides with some clear recovery area. So, what happens is that area has to be built up in some way, either through vegetation or through some other means. I realize I don't need to do that. To, one of the considerations we were given from the staff initially was, we should look at this as an opportunity to create a gateway element at the northern edge of the Gulf area. We should be reflecting the natural environment that surrounds Galt. We talked about what's in the city seal, different things that's been done on the central Gulf, bridge over crossings. We're trying to tie those images and character of the city somehow into these roundabouts. Obviously, need to meet the Caltrans design standards. Maintenance is obviously a very important feature as it's one thing to fund them, it's another thing to be able to maintain them down the road, that sustainability aspect and we're very cognizant of that. And one of the bigger challenges on this project is after we got into it, it became evident that irrigation on the west side was going to be quite a challenge and I'll get into that here in just a second. This gives you a little overview, east side, west side. We call, I've been referring to the west side as the dry side. And what's happening with the, on the west side is the closest water source is approximately eight thousand feet away. So, that would mean bringing water in that distance, which is quite costly. If you came across the freeway, you'd be hanging something on that Caltrans Bridge, which is no small feat in itself to get that type of approval going or boring and jacking under the freeway to get water over there. There has been discussions about a well that's being used by Caltrans now. There's a lot of issues with getting to use that, putting a pump on, who maintains it, etc. Again, there's a lot of costs involved with that. So, what we were asked is to consider this a dry side. What could we do? And when we got into that, that started opening up some real challenges as far as this isn't your typical landscape project as far as planting and irrigation. What could we do to meet some of these standards that we're expected to meet? Some of the early design studies, what we tried to do is just look at, if you did the bare bones minimum, considering a dry landscape, what would that be from a cost point of view and trying to meet some criteria? So, we looked at saying, and again, very conceptual, we're just schematically kind of spitballing here with some ideas. If you use boulders and rocks and mulch, no irrigation, what could you do? You could set something up, maybe sculpturally with that. That would probably be your low end of a cost and advancement. And then perhaps if you looked at doing something along the lines of adding some sort of sculptural element or something interesting in there, that's what the next couple of two down on the right-hand side are. And then we started looking at, well, what if we started adding some interesting art feature of some kind? And that led us to adding even more sculptural art pieces that were more recognizable with the herons and the marsh areas and abstracting maybe some of the wetland areas with some different kinds of colored rock or glass and perhaps integrating a gateway monument of some kind with a sign aspect. We also did take a look at what could we do from the point of view of plant materials that require little or no water? And basically, what that comes down to is looking at plant materials such as various succulents and things and now we're studying to look more like Houston than Northern California Central Valley, but that was an option that was being considered. And so, those would be the type of materials more prevalent to say, San Diego area and desert areas. The other two examples on the left, right side there, we're saying that if we treated the wet side, the dry side dry and the wet side wet, what kind of basic plantings could we be looking at? So, we just came up with some different schemes with the possibility of adding some walls in, some sculptural elements, staying within what most people would normally think of as a landscape roundabout. After further discussions with the staff of the ideas, we were directed to try to work more with the sculptural element. They liked the concept of where we were bringing in some sculptural elements of herons and the marshes, maybe using some, these are steel sculptures, sculptures a little larger than life, simplifying what would maybe be going on in the middle of the roundabout, using a lot of rock mulch. And again, we were considering this from a maintenance and a cost point of view initially before we really knew what we're looking at at cost. So, this gives you a general idea of what we were moving towards here. One intern in design also looked at saying, "Well, what if we did something similar on the east side, didn't just plant it, but we somehow tied those sides together?" And we talked about maybe doing something a little whimsical. And so, a concept that was developed in discussion with the staff about maybe there's some sort of a family, if you will, of sculpture looking at the birds across the way. And in my warped mind, I thought of coming up something- at the birds across the way. And in my warped mind, I thought of coming up something, I call them the tube people, but doing something a little different, a little whimsical, the bird on the head, you know, he's looking out across. But it'd be something different, a wow factor, an impact factor. And again, this is the east side view that could possibly be planted as opposed to left dry. So you could still have some planting on the east side. What came out of that discussion was, well, perhaps we want to tone that back a little bit, so we wanted to bring something else to the table here that was more in matching, although I still like the tube people, that we do something along the lines of reflecting the same type of an approach with the sculptures themselves, using more recognizable people or sculptures. So on the west roundabout side, what we ended up doing here is the same type of sculptures in this raised roundabout area. But as you can see here, we're asked to soften up the expanse around the clear recovery area, maybe soften up the center raised portion that could also hold sign areas. And what we're looking at here, I just want to point out at this time, we've identified two locations on each roundabout for signage, so that as you are coming in from the west or coming in from the north, that you would be picking up and that you were arriving in the Gulf area. And same thing on the east side. One caveat with this is that in discussing with Caltrans, they have a limited amount of signs per interchange. And while they would allow this, they were saying that if we wanted to go to a total of four signs, if you will, your self entrance in the future, should you ever want to do something from a sign point of view, would be probably nonexistent. They probably wouldn't allow that at this time. So that's just something to keep in mind. We don't have to have the four. We just felt it was appropriate, but we could reduce that should you want to have that opportunity in the future, should one of these designs move forward. Again, what we're looking at here, utilizing a mixture of rock mulch, boulders and texture, the faux grass, which I've used actually quite a bit. I'll show you some pictures here of a roundabout in Ripon that we use it where some people came out and were complaining that, why is the city wasting so much water on watering this grass? It looks too great all the time, et cetera. And then they realized that it was faux grass and were quite taken back by it. But we thought it was important to start introducing some color here, do some mounting, and the grass could do that since the public are not to be right up next to this area here. So again, a little different view on this again as the west roundabout. As you can see, the east roundabout, the distance factor, there are some trees and things in between these areas that you'd see. Going to the east roundabout, again, we were asked to look at using the same type of sculptural elements. And again, these are flat steel sculptures made out of portan steel that would be cut out. What became a challenge was finding positions and people that you could recognize that these were people. With the birds, it was a lot easier because birds in flight, birds in moving, you could move them around. With the people, it became a little bit more difficult, so that as you were moving around the roundabout, you weren't just looking at a small edge at a time. So again, as part of the whimsy of this, you know, maybe adding in a rabbit, a squirrel, something like that, family of bird watchers. We think that these elements here start to represent that and people could recognize that. And again, they're looking out across at the roundabout on the other side. So we're hoping that that aspect would get picked up. Again, part of this is tying into the idea of the bird preserve, the wildlife preserve out to the west, the general nature, the natural area around there, your own Gulf logo and symbol and seal that reflects these images in there. And again, it's in tying with the naturalness of the area and the plant materials used. This gives you an idea from a larger-than-life. Some discussion was made about this, shouldn't they be more like real size, et cetera? In my opinion, design opinion, these need a wow factor. They need a big factor in this. So we're looking at something anywhere from 12 to 15 feet tall in order to be seen from a distance and to be that larger-than-life, again, to have that how factor. If you do something too small, it's just not worth the effort, in my opinion. Giving you an idea, if you're not familiar with portan steel, it's a product that actually is treated so that it rusts faster. But it's not a rust, it's hard to explain exactly, but it's a treatment of the steel that gives this effect. It's not that it's deteriorating away on itself. It's the outer shell essentially gives this rust factor. But it's a very naturalness looking material in the environment. We can't deal with things that are glaring. We thought of painting and doing it. There would be a lot of maintenance involved there. So this is, I believe, an interesting way of going. The aspect within the west roundabout, where we're trying to indicate the marsh area abstractly, we thought it'd be interesting to bring in some colored glass. I look at this much like decomposed granite or gravel. It's just a tumbled glass. There's no sharp edges. I'm a spread in. This gives you an idea what this would look like. Again, we think it's important to start to tie these abstract ideas together of the marsh, of the water, the plant materials in that, et cetera. And that would be up on those top areas. In the artificial grass, a couple of pictures here of the roundabout in Ripon where we designed a clock tower and enhanced this area. They didn't want to plant this whole area out. At the same time, they didn't just want to do with bark mulch, et cetera. So what we looked at was the artificial grass on this. And again, it's been a great seller. There are different qualities of artificial grass. And so it's much improved over the years. And again, people love it, hate it, but in a situation where you're looking at low maintenance, long-term viability, we think it's a good opportunity to introduce some color, texture, and some naturalness to the site itself. From a hardscape point of view, these are kind of the materials we're looking at from a split base block coloring, some gravel mulch. The rock size here is about six to eight inches inside as far as the river run rock and then mixing it with some of the smaller, so you get some textural change in those areas mixed in. When we get into the plant materials on the east side, the main palette in that area, what we're trying to do is again, keep the maintenance down, very low water use. And we're trying to create this naturalness like you're out in the marsh area, out in the grassland areas. But we'd still like to introduce some color and things that would be low maintenance. And that's where the ground cover rose comes in. It'd be spilling over the top to those walls. Looking at using the hard res pescu, which is a bunch grass that has that naturalness in appearance. And there's a new variety of buffalo grass that's known as UC Verde buffalo grass that was created at UC Davis. And this is actually a walk-on grass. I've actually spec'd this out in some park areas now. But this grass can be mowed, it can be let to grow, but it's very low water use. We're talking about a once-a-month watering in-season and the rest of the season not. It goes dormant during the other times. So mixing this grass with the hard pescu, I mean, those areas where on the west side, we'd use the faux grass, this would bring across that same appearance, but in using the natural materials. Again, using some of this pink moly grass, has this beautiful plumage on it, but doesn't seed throughout the area. Again, tying this all together with the plant materials. Question we always get, what are we looking at here from a cost point of view? Once we got into this level of detail, we were able to break down the cost fairly extensively with a contingency factor in there. And again, what we looked at was if we were to plant the east side with irrigation, and what we've shown you there, we have a cost for that ground cover, those costs. The sculptures and the wall elements, we went out and got some costs from various vendors that could actually do this. And it was ranging right now from 30 to 60,000 for the various sculptures that we had shown in these pictures. So until we get into the detail, it'll be hard to tie that down, so we use a higher figure. We also looked at uplighting. It's not necessary, but we would recommend it. Some lighting on the signage, some lighting on the sculptures. At the very least, what we would recommend is providing the conduits and the access to some of these areas now, so that in the future, should you move forward with one of these ideas, that you could do that, so you wouldn't be getting into tearing up the walls in the future. With that, I tried to make a quick presentation, hopefully an informative one. I'm here to answer any questions. Ron Boyle is also here, the lead engineer on the project, to answer any questions you might have or comments.
If I may, before we start, I do want to comment a few things. The budget is kind of tight on the project, so we are concerned about that, which is why we asked for that piece there. One of the things we may do is bid, for example, the uplighting is a bid alternate that we could add if bids come in low. We're looking at some other possibilities in that regard. And the last thing is that, you know, this is something we're trying to do that's beautiful. And beauty's in the buyer, the beholder. So whatever you do, there will be somebody who doesn't like it. And I've been in various public art projects in the past, and there's always someone who doesn't like it. So be prepared for that. Thank you.
Questions?
I like the Gumby guys too, by the way.
Excuse me. Questions, council members, comments?
Is this just on one roundabout, or are we thinking about doing a?
We are looking at both sides with the...
What I'm talking about is doing a different scene on both ends of the, for both roundabouts.
The west roundabout would have the birds. The east side would have the people looking at the birds. That's the concept.
I have a question. If you could humor me for a minute. Why couldn't we, why wouldn't you, to avoid water altogether, do the artificial on both sides?
We could do that.
Because, you know, maintenance, the maintenance is, you know, we're kind of having a problem with maintenance in our parks and stuff, so I'm kind of wondering about...
You're quite right. When we, when we looked at that side, that was something that was discussed. We're looking about, talking about treating it the same. What we're throwing out is that we still have this option. We're going to be bringing some irrigation in there anyways for the other plant materials. It wasn't a stretch. And because this is very low water use, we thought that, again, you don't have to cut this grass. There's no mowing of this grass. It can be mowed, but you don't need to. It will grow into like a meadow-type grass. And then with the longer bunch grasses, you'll have more of a textural interest. So definitely, the initial install cost would be cheaper with the regular plant materials that we're making.
Does it take, what kind of maintenance does it take with the live stuff? As opposed to the...
Not, not like cutting grass. Again, just checking it out is as far as if there's some dead areas, replacing some stuff. It goes in as a plug. It doesn't go in as a sod, or it cannot go in as a seed. So it's actually very low maintenance. There's not much you really need to do to it once you establish them, except for water.
But if something happens and they die, you're going to be pulling them all out and plugging them back in, correct?
True, but I don't know that you wouldn't see that whole list if you died. It's like any other plant materials, you're going to have some problem areas, yes.
Well, you'll be out there a couple of times a year at least, dealing with the drip irrigation system, making sure that it's functioning properly when you start it up in the spring, checking it once or twice during the season. There'll be, again, as you mentioned, plant replacement. It's not a real heavy burden. Actually, there'll probably be more calls to pick up trash than there will be to do plant maintenance. And that's true of whatever you do out there.
You said you didn't have to mow this lawn. That'll just keep growing. Well, I've got to assume that it's going to grow so much sometime that it's going to get on the road, which we have to cut at some point, so...
Well, no, it grows to a certain level and length. It can be maintained. What is it? It's a hybrid of a, the buffalo grasses that are used, and I'll use an example, I think, in around the Eltrove interchange on Highway Five uses that buffalo grass. It's more standard buffalo grass, where it's a longer bunch grass that folds over on itself, stays to a certain level once it grows there. This grows very much like that. Gets to, can get to about that level. But if you wanted to cut it, you could cut it and make it more of a lawn grass. So that's what I'm saying. It's a new version of this, but it's also very low water use from that point of view. I was recommending a mixture of that because it stays shorter than some of those other grasses, so you have some different variety of...
I just, it's hard for me to see it not growing over the edges. You said it keeps growing. And I understand what you're saying, we're short, or, you know, you can trim it. I just was curious as to if it, you know, I'm sure we'd have to cut it at some point.
Once it gets to a certain, certain size, it just stops growing?
Pretty much, yes.
It does?
Exactly. And...
Does that mean it changes color too, if it goes dormant?
It does go dormant. It does go dormant, yes.
So that means it gets brown?
It would go brown, but you'll have the other grasses in there which have some different color and texture. So again, many of the other grasses, well, some of the other plants will also. Do you have a change of season which is most natural in the area?
Got a comment.
I'd like to comment on the function of the landscaping a little bit more. On the, on the east side, we have more pedestrians. And one of the functions of the landscaping, and Scott alluded to earlier, is to separate the roadway from the pedestrians. But really, what it's doing is it's guiding the pedestrians to the pedestrian crossings. So we're kind of creating an area where...
And this colored area is where there's subtexture or landscaping on this side.
Correct. And so on the, on the west side, where we're using more of a dry landscape, I mean, we're focusing on the center islands, but we also need to be considered about the splitter islands and the separation between the Sherridys Pass, which is what the sidewalk is, and the roadway, and keeping pedestrians focused on not walking through the center of the roundabout and across the intersection, but using the crosswalks. And on the west side, we don't have a lot of pedestrians. And in the future, when that area develops, you would always have the possibility to come in and add some landscaping, where today with the plan, we would just be adding the rock mulch. But on the east side, we have more pedestrians. We've done the bike trails, the bike lanes through there and stuff. We really want to encourage pedestrians to use the crossings, so the opportunity to use their irrigated plants and grow some rock rose or whatever in that area to kind of say, you know, this, don't walk through here, you want to walk around. So there's really a function to the landscaping as well, and as well with the center island and having to have some sort of a visual barrier.
You're not talking about having any kind of that shale rock on the edges of the walkways like you were pointing out, right?
Only...
Only in the center part.
On this side. No, that is, sorry. When we, when we get to the west side, we would be using rock mulches and decomposed granite. We didn't get into that intricate detailed design, but we figured we would maybe sculpt it in, have some larger rocks, smaller rocks, because that's all we can do on that side.
So it's not going to be loose rock then?
It would be loose.
It would be. Is it that just in the center of the roundabout, or are you going to have it on the edges by the walkways also?
We would have it on the edges by the walkers, which is not an uncommon thing.
Well, I worry about...
It could be that in concrete, but I'm not sure it would be necessary.
I worry because, you know, I'm sure you guys have heard, you know, some kids aren't the smartest, and they'll grab them rocks and toss them over the freeway. I get worried about that people's safety, that's all.
But that is a good point. And as Scott mentioned, this could be decomposed granite, which actually I'm a big fan of, because it tends to stay put, whereas loose rock won't.
We could probably utilize it more, say, in that larger areas, just to create some more texture. But I understand your point, using the smaller type stuff to fill in in the side areas, yeah.
Yeah, because I'd hate to see somebody get hurt just because they threw that over the bridge.
I think we have someone from the audience, unless you have any more discussion. Mr. Guthridge, did you want to make a comment?
My guy, General Park. As you know, we own the land on the west side there, northwest side, where Softcom used to be. Now we got a nice company in there that's solar. As you know, we got water right there and we water, we have landscaping right along there. I'd like to know what's going to happen to our landscaping, because we're, as they say, we got greenery. And we haven't done much since Kevin's moved out. But as they say, when the city gets ready to do something there, and that's, we'd like to do something, but if it's, if it's all going to be dry, then, then our idea of landscaping and greenery and watering is not going to be the same look. So is it important? Because I feel like the west side is for people coming into Gulf and coming from I-5 to Gulf is the more important side than the east side. So I think it's really important to have the west side more aesthetically pleasing than the east side, my estimation.
Are you volunteering your water?
I'll volunteer the water.
Questions from council? I would have to ask, where's the money coming from? Where is the funding?
The funding for the project is from a couple of different sources. One is from Caltrans. If you recall, they gave us a million dollars to do some of the work. Most of it's coming from our traffic impact fees.
Okay.
That we've planned over the years.
General funds?
Nope.
The other thing I'm worried about is, I really like the metal sculptures, but I'm worried about how long they're going to last there before someone decides to take them and try to recycle them for a few bucks?
Yes.
Or vandalism or something like that. Do you have any thoughts along those lines? Because really, the west side doesn't have very much in the way of population or anyone to keep an eye on it. So that would be my concern. It's a lot of money. I love the ideas, but I'm concerned about it.
Well, from the, you know, it's a question we get all the time, as a designer, as the artist, as you will. We did give some consideration to... Uh, we did give some consideration to, uh, how these would be put together and look, um, the size of them, et cetera, what the materials are made out of from that point of view. I cannot guaran, I'll be, you know, quite frank, I cannot guarantee, I can't control the population, doesn't it? We can mitigate, I, I look at trying to, if we try to mitigate everything, it would be nothing, I, we, we try to do that. From a vandalism point of view, you may have that, they should be easily cleaned because of their flat surfaces. Um, we're looking at surrounding it with some things, they're up higher, they're off in the center, out of the way, um, from that point of view. Uh, as far as somebody taking them or stealing them, uh, these will be anchored pretty good in place. Somebody would have to get out there with a blowtorch and start cutting them down. It is steel, it's not copper, um, so it's not a material that's necessarily, you know, gonna be in, uh, great demand from a, you know, moving something like that would be quite difficult as far as fencing it or bringing it out to a recycler, you know, and trying to push that by. So I'm not sure how to answer that, we've given that some thought, that's why we came up with these ideas. We looked at some three D sculptures and things, which would be much more expensive. Then we're trying to tie in some of the theme, uh, in some way. And what was driving this originally was because we had this west side, again, that was driving, we thought, well, how can we tie this together, get something going in there, um, and so we ran with the idea.
Do we have enough money to build the roundabouts and add the landscaping?
We're gonna be evaluating that as part of the upcoming budget process to see where we are. They're still working on some final estimates as far as the actual construction. And, uh, we won't know for certain until we get into the, the project, and that's why they're talking about putting some ad alternates. So if it ends up being more expensive than we planned out, there's things we can drop out.
Okay.
In order to reduce those costs.
Okay, so we're not, we're not voting tonight to spend, what was that, ninety something thousand dollars?
Not at all, we're asking for, you know, conceptual approval of, of this design concept, so we can go forward with the plans. As I mentioned, we have to go back to Caltrans, and we'll be back to this council for some resolutions supporting this. This is a part of their process that we weren't quite aware of until this recently.
Would you want us to decide which of the pictures we like better?
Um, the two people versus.
The two people.
The two people.
Councilman Cruz.
Personally, I, I think what you have up there is excellent. I'm really not wild about your two people.
Sorry, you can steal. Any other comments, concerns? Okay, what do you wanna do, folks?
I like them, I really like them a lot. I think you did a great job.
I like them, but I'm worried that people are gonna think, wow, look, this city has lots of money. Look at all the money they spent on those roundabouts, so I'm thinking it's a little bit too, bling bling for me.
They're gonna say, look at that city, nothing coming.
A little.
It's rolling.
Simpler.
I like the idea of the birds tied into our, our, uh, seal, our winter bird festival. I was just concerned that, uh, they would be vandalized and.
And I, I would be the same.
All that kinda stuff.
One of the things we've always kind of lacked in the city is a gateway. Where people enter the city, whether it's the Central Interchange or Twin Cities, those are where people get their first impressions of our community. And it's though, you know, the old saying is you only get one chance to make a first impression.
And. That's what we're gonna do with the new bridge.
Really, you know, we look at all the development we wanna have, out along Twin Cities. Um, this is gonna set the mark for, I think, what happens in the future with other developers, other people coming into town. Um, I think it's gonna send a very strong message to not only, I think, the community, but others looking at the city of Galt.
Well, that's what I thought we were gonna do with the new bridge, also.
We're doing it everywhere, Mike.
I had no idea that we were gonna get this distracted with our roundabout.
Okay, I'm, I'm ready for the council to make a decision on what they want here. Well, if no one's gonna speak up, I, I like the, the design of the, of the birds. Um, I'm worried about them, but I like the design, I think it ties into helping Galt get its identity that we're always trying to find. That would be my, my suggestion.
I agree, I agree.
The birds and also then like these people, the bird watchers?
No, wouldn't, wouldn't there have birds on both sides, or would you have bird watchers on one side?
We can certainly do that, that's the council's desire. We were trying to make them, the two roundabouts have some.
Difference?
Difference. And, and somehow tie them together. Um, but yeah, we, we could do both sides like the one on the left. I mean, that, that would certainly be feasible to do, and it would probably cost a little less.
Would you put the birds on one side and the two, two people on the other side? Would that not be pleasing to the eye?
Well, well, actually, that, the, the, uh, the original intent was, like we said, uh, when we were looking at it, we were looking at sculptures and maybe just on one side, and maybe doing just kind of a traditional landscaping on the other. As we got to discussing with the staff, and they came up with some ideas also, and they said, wh- what about reflecting this on the other side? And, and maybe tying it together in some way? So we had two different sculptures, instead of doing the same thing, do something like you said.
Interesting.
Similar, but related, uh, and, and, or different, but related, and that's when we came up with the idea, how about the, the people watching, which is a big part, like you said, your bird festival, et cetera. My initial thought, and they've talked about doing something whimsical, and that's where the two people came from, uh, from that idea. That came back, and that got a great, yeah, this is great, but maybe we ought to come up with an alternate plan, and this was the alternate, which I think is a, a fine design also. Um, but we think that that gives it more of that, instead of doing the same thing twice. We're using all the other elements the same, but now you've got two different things going on, two different blazes, two different things.
So the point I wanted to reiterate from the earlier part of the presentation was, we can't just leave the center of the roundabout flat. Gotta have something about six feet tall in there. We could build an X shaped wall and meet the criteria for Caltrans, and I don't think anybody would like it, it'd become a graffiti wall. So we were, you know, in my experience, having something that's, that looks like art, uh, tends to get left alone in terms of graffiti. Um, that, that's, and that gets back to what we're looking at here.
Okay.
And the problem with your two people is it looks like pigeon perches, and we have enough problems with pigeons as is, so.
That was one of our comments, was lose the bird.
Well, my suggestion then is the birds on the west side, and maybe do the two people for the eyes on the other side.
Bird watchers?
The bird watchers.
The bird watchers make sense, but.
You said two people, that's.
I think everybody happy.
Careful.
Okay.
Cause I went up and you said two people, I thought you said tube.
I did.
Tube?
Yeah, that's what they're called, two people. Okay, so do you have, do we need a vote on this direction?
She's not understanding.
Okay.
Show her the two people.
That's okay.
What do you motion to be?
This is what you're saying.
Be the alternative to the.
Isn't that what you like?
I like that, but nobody else.
They're bird watchers, they're just abstracted bird watchers.
Yeah, that's where it used to hang people, it was like a gallows, you know?
Fall into that category, not everybody.
I don't think that would look good.
Sorry, Mr. Guthridge, you're done.
Birds and the family.
Okay, we've got a.
Watchers and the bird.
And the family.
The watchers, the birds.
Okay, now, we need a motion for that, but please.
The staff's recommendation is what you're, what you're wanting to move.
I move to accept staff's recommendation of the two from, um, designs on each side.
Do you have, do you understand?
Right there.
Okay, so you have, uh, motion, did we have a second? And so we need a vote.
Vice Mayor Powers, aye. Councilmember Singleton. Councilmember Shelton.
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz.
Aye.
Mayor Payne.
Aye, motions have passed unanimously, next item.
Next item, capital improvement program.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, I just wanted to say on behalf of the council that we thought that was an excellent presentation.
It was a great one.
Thank you so much.
Okay, capital improvement program project update, January two thousand eleven.
Madam, members of the council, it's my understanding this quarterly update on the, um, uh, CIP is really kind of to give you the written status of all the projects, but really kind of highlight a couple of them. Um, and if I go through these and, and leave off talking about your favorite one, be sure and, and ask about it. Um, general improvements, the Galt Central Porter Rehabilitation Project, which is a companion project with the UPRR Railroad. Um, a lot of, uh, park improvement is in design. Uh, of course, we are kind of caught up in this issue with redevelopment, um, on at least part of that project. We do have two million dollars from the, uh, CACOG Community Design Grant Program to cover, um, much of the C Street work, not, not all of it. But, uh, uh, so, so they are underway. Um, I took a great interest in the, in this project because, uh, I do have a bit of familiarity with downtown type work, and, uh, I've had some, a good time with your staff, the consultants, to kind of talk about some concepts and so forth. So that one's moving forward. Um, Walker Park, uh, is essentially completed, although we just opened bids, uh, a couple days ago on the, uh, bleachers. And good news is we came in way under, under our estimates on that. So it appears we can get bleachers on, uh, both sides of the field, um, using, uh, remaining, uh, balances within the project. Uh, there'll also be a, a, a purchase order issued for a walkway to connect the two, because right now it craves across the, the, uh, artificial turf. And so putting in a, an improved walkway there would, would keep people off that turf.
Um, do we have, uh, security cameras out there yet? We do.
Okay, I don't know.
Cause I know we've been having issues with people hopping that fence and, uh, using our artificial turf, uh, cause I've been out there and seen it. So I just wanted to make sure we were addressing that, and who monitors that, or is it just recorded?
My, my understanding is the cameras do not face the, the field. They, they're not pointed towards the field.
That is correct.
Are they facing the playground?
It, it, it faces the walkways, up and down that walkway, that's along that side.
So we don't have anything that we're doing.
Looks across the field, and the issue there is at nighttime, when the field is not lit.
Yeah.
The cameras wouldn't see anything.
You got infrared, usually they picks up anything in the dark.
These particular cameras are not infrared. But we, uh, Troy Bonnet, the park superintendent, has been talking to Bay Alarm about options in terms of getting some eyes on the field.
Yeah.
So that's.
That's important, cause we spend a lot of money on that artificial turf.
And so far, they're relatively respecting it, the field, not the fence, but they are respecting it.
Right, there you go, yeah, thank you.
Uh, moving along in transportation, we have, I wanted to highlight the street light retrofit project that is complete. Uh, we've already received some, uh, call, at least one other electric utility, uh, asking about how that project went, and wanted to see some photographs. So that was a nice compliment, I thought. Um, the, uh, roundabout, we just kept talking about that, but I, I did wanna point out that the, uh, uh, construction on that really won't be until, uh, two thousand thirteen. We had hoped to get this thing out to bid still in two thousand twelve, but with the Caltrans process to approve their million dollars, uh, that won't happen until August. So we obviously don't wanna, awarding a contract before that, and the, um, uh, really the likelihood of, you know, awarding a contract and starting construction in the fall, you know, maybe able to award and have some requirements about how we schedule the work, but, um, look for the real work to be in two thousand thirteen on that. The, um, water systems, the, I wanted to highlight the, uh, a couple of upcoming projects that are still, not even in design yet. Um, the, uh, Carillion Reservoir and, and the new water well on Cost Road. Those, uh, are related projects in terms of providing additional capacity for the water system. Uh, we are doing an evaluation of the number of wells and the amount of storage we have right now. It may be that, you know, uh, we wanna, you know, prioritize one over the other. Um, I was struck by how much storage Galt has in its system, it's a lot, uh, as opposed to rather limited well capacity. And that is part of the state permitting requirements. So we're going through the actual, which we changed a few years ago, by the way, um, in terms of the criteria the state wants to see. So we are doing an evaluation in-house with, uh, with, using that criteria to see if we need to prioritize one over the other. Um, the wastewater treatment facilities planning, um, exercise, which is, uh, what we received an EPA grant for. We are, um, getting rolling on that, um, the, uh, you'll see an item on the council in the next week, hopefully the next, you know, probably next meeting, um, for that. And, um, I just wanted to highlight another item on the annual sewer pipeline improvements. One of the things we're doing as part of the budget this year is taking the master plans that was, that were completed in two thousand ten, and making sure all those projects that are described in that master plan wind up on a CIP sheet somewhere, so we don't get lost, you know, lost in the shuffle. Uh, we won't have, obviously, money to fund all them in, in the near future, but I thought it was important, that should get them on the list, so they don't get, get lost. I mean, you may decide at some point that you don't even do that project, but at this point, we have these master plans, we ought to make sure we, you know, keep track of that. And I think that, oh, there's no drainage projects. And I just wanted to mention that that is an issue I think is gonna have to, the council's gonna have to consider in the, at some point in the future, that, um, uh, there undoubtedly are areas in town that need drainage improvements. And again, I mentioned that, that was one of those areas that was, that were studied in the two thousand ten master plat, master plan. Not just projects for new development, but projects to improve the conditions in the current community. And that will be a funding issue that you'll need to wrestle with, with that tier one, tier two business you have in your, your drainage, uh, drainage rates. With that, that's important.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Anyone, uh, have any questions? If not, we need to just receive the report, do we have to vote? No, we do have to vote on receiving it?
Okay.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to receive the report, do we have a second, we have first, second, vote please?
Vice Mayor Powers, aye. Councilmember Singleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton.
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz. Mayor Payne.
Aye, motion passed unanimously. We will now adjourn to the redevelopment agency while we still have one.
Maybe our last one?
Yeah.
Board members, Powers, here. Singleton.
Here.
Shelton.
Here.
Cruz.
Here.
Payne, here.
Uh, public comments?
We have no speaker sheets.
We have no speaker sheets, uh, you wanna read the, uh, consent calendar?
Yes, we have three items. The first one, approval of the minutes of the meeting of December twentieth, two thousand eleven. Number two, approval of the redevelopment agency warrants. And number three, approval of the treasures report for the period ending November two thousand eleven.
Any questions or comments? If not.
We'll accept consent.
We have a motion and a second, go call vote please.
Board members, Powers. Aye. Singleton.
Aye.
Shelton.
Aye.
Cruz.
Aye.
Payne.
Aye, uh, motion passed unanimously. Um, let's see, was there anything else on the?
A resolution of the City of Galt Redevelopment Agency adopting an enforceable obligation payment schedule.
Good evening, um, earlier this evening, the city attorney presented some information regarding, um, AB twenty six. Staff this evening is recommending that the agency approve the enforceable obligation schedule. And, um, I won't repeat everything the city attorney went over on the actual AB twenty six, but one of the items that he presented was that the city needed to take certain actions as a successor agency. From the redevelopment agency perspective, it's important for us now to update our enforceable obligation schedule. Back in September, the agency approved the schedule, but that was only through the period of December thirty first, two thousand eleven. Now, it's critical for us to continue or update that schedule, so that we, we can continue to make payments from January first, two thousand twelve, and the schedule actually goes through June thirtieth, two thousand twelve. We recognize that the Oversight Board may be in effect by May first. However, we want to present all of the obligations of the redevelopment agency, so that the city, as a successor agency, can continue making those payments. All of the obligations of the redevelopment agency, whether they be contracts, purchase orders, or the actual, um, um, agreements pursuant to the bond indentures are included in the attachment A, the enforceable obligation payment schedule. This will hopefully enable us to continue to make those payments again through the, um, term of June thirtieth, two thousand twelve. Um, if the agency chooses not to adopt the EOPS as presented, then basically, no additional payments can be made on behalf of the redevelopment agency. So staff is recommending that the agency approve of the updated EOPS schedule. And, um, attached, attachment A actually goes through all of the, um, obligations of the agency. This is similar to the schedule that you did see back in September. We did include other agreements that were in place that were, um, overlooked earlier. So this is a, we believe, a comprehensive schedule. We did reflect all those obligations. We are hoping that if those payments are not made in January, that sometime during that six month period, that those obligations can continue to be, um, paid on behalf of the agency. So if, uh, the board has any questions with me, I'd be more than glad to try to address those, but if not, staff does ask for your approval of the EOPS, the enforceable obligation payment schedule.
Any questions on the payment schedule? Then is there a motion to approve the enforceable obligation payment schedule?
If I may.
Which is adopting a resolution.
It is. In my staff report, um, I did note that the enforceable obligation schedule was through May. In fact, the attachment A is actually through June thirtieth. So two housekeeping changes would be that the schedule does reflect the payments, um, pursuant, or through the period of June thirtieth. I apologize for that error.
Okay. Well, we're ready to...
I'm gonna make my motion now. A motion that we adopt the resolution as, as presented. Or as, I'm sorry, as amended, yeah.
Thank you.
First and second, uh, roll call, vote, please. Board members, Powers. Aye. Singleton.
Aye.
Shelton.
Aye.
Cruz.
Aye.
Payne.
Aye. Mo- motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item. Oh, we're, we are now adjourning from the redevelopment and reconvening to the regular city council meeting.
Yes. They mean, that's you, something a few years back. Okay, there we go. Um, before you tonight are two vacancies that need appointment. The first one is for the Sacramento Transportation Authority. That is for an alternate position. Vice Mayor Powers holds the full position. Uh, meetings are held the second Thursday of every month and it would only, you would only need to attend in Vice Mayor Powers' absence. So, um, this appointment is made by the, uh, consensus of council.
We're looking for a volunteer?
That's what, that's what we're looking for.
This is S.P.
Sacramento Transportation Authority.
If no one else suggests, I'd really like to get shot at.
Okay. Do we need to vote on, on this? Okay.
Okay, I nominate Mark Cruz to be the alternate on the S.P.A.
And we have a second. Vice Mayor Powers? Aye. Do we need to vote on that? Um, number Singleton? Do you have a first and second?
Okay.
Nope, go ahead. Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
I used the wrong word. Councilmember Cruz?
I can vote?
Aye.
Oh, you nominated, you volunteered.
Yes. Uh, nomination passed unanimously.
Okay, the next appointment is an appointment that needs to be made by Mayor Payne. It's a vacancy on the Parks and Recreation Commission. The city clerk's office advertised. We did receive one letter of interest from Don Buchanan. So I look for an appointment from Mayor Payne at this time.
Okay, I would like to appoint Don Buchanan. I think he will be a good, um, representative on the Parks and Recs Commission. He's thoroughly involved in the youth. He's sponsored teams, he's coached, he has children. I think he will be a good appointment. Do we need to vote on that?
I don't think so.
Okay. He's my appointment.
And I have a couple reminders.
Okay.
The beautification committee will meet this Thursday in the City Hall Community Room at three thirty. On January twenty-fourth, we have a utility rate adjustment, uh, public meeting at six P.M. in the Police Department Community Room. Also on Janu- January twenty-fourth, we have an FCT link, short range, I can't speak tonight, transit plan at five thirty here in the council chambers. On January twenty-eighth, we have our annual Winter Bird Festival. There's a lot of exciting things. If you have not booked your tours, you should probably do so. They're filling up quickly. Uh, there, I'm trying to think of some highlights. Canon Cameras bringing, I believe, twenty-two, uh, lenses, they're sixteen thousand dollar lenses. I don't know the magnification on them, but people will be able to, and they'll, they'll be on some of the tours. You'll be able to take your memory chip out of your camera, put it in this camera to take pictures.
Oh, wow.
Yes, it's kind of exciting. It's the first year for that. Um, boy, if you watch A Good Day Sacramento on January twenty-sixth at eight A.M., you'll, you'll see some familiar faces, uh, talking about the Winter Bird Festival and talking about Galt. So I think, I think it'll be a fun time.
You're getting better than ever.
Yes.
So if you want to follow the tour, reserve now, 'cause half of them are already full, so.
And also, Wild Things, Live Animals will be here again this year, which was a big hit last year. I think last year they had a hawk and a beaver and a kangaroo.
What they're gonna have this year?
Do you know? An owl. I don't, uh, I'm not quite sure what they're bringing. It's always a surprise, I, I think.
Okay. Sounds great.
Aye, thank you.
Everything coming up again this month is, uh, CAS meeting, January thirtieth. Those that are on CAS, you know, Randy and Barbara. What is it again?
CAS.
CAS. Cities and schools together.
Oh, is it, your mic is about up, I think it's hearing you.
Sorry about that. CAS.
Okay. Uh, anything else, Liz?
I don't think you...
Then, uh, comments by staff? Comments? City manager?
No, I think, uh, I think that pretty well covers it.
Okay.
At all.
Okay.[1693.22]